I will call on March 28, 2018 Franklin Township Board of Supervisors meeting. The order is 7:03. The attendants are Supervisors Dee, Marsh, Snyder, Torres. Also in attendance are Solicitor Mark Thompson, Historic Committee and Hard Chairman Paul Agassi, Manager Treasurer Joan McCall, Secretary Sharon Norris, and there are approximately seven numbers, six or seven.
Six.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, first we'll come to the public comment section. To support you should state your name clearly or the tape, so the comments can be reflected accurately. You should state whether you're a township resident or a township taxpayer. What we usually do at the public comment, since it's a small group here, we'll take public comment during the discussion of the issue that you have. So normally the board will talk about it first and then we'll engage the public. So if you've got something on the agenda you want to talk about, just wait till it comes up and you'll get an opportunity to speak. Any public comment on anything that's not on the agenda? At the end of the meeting, you can talk about anything you want as in the public comment section. Okay. Nancy, you want to start with the first motion? We'll just go by way around here.
Sure. I make a motion to approve the February 21st, 2018 meeting minutes as presented by the Township Secretary. Seconded by?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? No? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, so I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors adopt Resolution 2018-12 regarding disposition of records for the Board of Supervisor meeting on February 21st, 2018, and the Planning Commission meeting on February 1st, 2018.
I'll second that.
Thanks, David. And for the public, this is just our ability to erase the tape. Because we're meeting, so now I'm writing, and so we can erase the tape and use it again. Any discussion? Okay. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. I make a motion that the Board approved the February Treasurer's report, which includes the following disbursements: General Fund with disbursements and transfers of $122,515.63; Parking Rec Fund with disbursements of $1,394.79; Open Space Fund with disbursements of $6,768.42; Emergency Services Fund with disbursements of $5,681; and the 500 Fund with disbursements of $580.80, leaving a balance in all funds totaling $493,879.46.
Second.
Seconded by Stephanie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed saying nay. Five, zero. Mr. Chairman.
Very good. I'm going to go ahead with this next item. This is the February zoning officer's report. No motion is needed. There were five permits issued. There were 26 building inspections. The billing fee collected was $601. Recreation of the space impact fee collected, zero. Mislandis fee collected, 675. There's one ongoing zoning issue that is being monitored, and that relates to, I had a number on it. I have a question. Jeff is looking for direction on that. What direction is he looking for?
We're kind of lost here, but we're scheduled in court for a hearing. That's the one. Did they make the offer of the podcast? I don't know. Did you make that offer?
What's the issue on that? Were you asked about it?
It went to bankruptcy. It was taken back by the bank, and they weren't doing any maintenance on it, and it was in very bad shape. Jeff cited them, and we actually sent people to do some of the mowing because it was so bad.
This is after the bank took possession?
Well, some of it was before, in the interim, when it was changing hands. And so the bank still didn't bring it up to code, so Jeff cited them, and there's a hearing in District Court.
So is this hearing scheduled, I think, for August, I'm sorry, September 4th?
Yeah, it was changed from the 12th.
And I talked to the bank's attorney, the agent of D.C., and he called me this week and indicated they wanted to clean it up, and they wanted to try to settle the court proceeding with stipulated penalties to cover our fees. So we're waiting for them to clean that up. Once that happens, then we'll see if it meets Jeff's approval and find out if we can negotiate a settlement that would cover all the fees that the township has had to pay.
Would that settlement offer, plus the expenses?
Well, they haven't actually made a settlement offer. I mean, we were requesting $5,000 in penalties, but we'll see what, how it transpires.
And our expenses are approximately $1,500.
Including everything? These laws?
Well, well.
I just got the call yesterday.
It's the same property that women are in trouble over there.
Yeah. So the good news is you're going to, they're probably going to get this figured out before the 20th. They don't want to go to court.
Send it back, right?
I was told it sold at auction, so hopefully we're going forward with that. Ten to two picks up.
Well, why is it sold?
Yeah, yeah. As far as we know, it's still in the name of the bank, but.
Maybe not, Stephen. Yeah.
All right. I'll introduce the next one. Member of the P.C., Planning Commission will present a summary of the February 1st meeting and their annual report for the Board's review. You were there, or you were there. There are also, but I don't remember. So since David's not here, then we'll do the rest of the calendar report.
Let's all start, and then Paul back me up and put these superpowers. So Nancy, you were there too. So just, you do have the P.C. annual report in your, I think it's in your folder. We can use it at the meeting. Sharon, from the Go's, we're all written, all the work that's been done by the P.C.'s in there. I think there's a lot of good work that the group has to be very proud of. But it was accepted, we voted on and accepted at the meeting. So if you have any questions, we can try to answer them during this meeting. The big thing that we're proud of is that the group worked on the in-law suites, and we felt that there was a need to get ordinance together to make sure that folks could bring a law or whatever, a family member into their house if they wanted to put a part of that house aside for them. And right now, our current ordinance didn't have that ability. It got confusing. So that's what this is about. There was some questions, and Nancy was there with us, about Airbnbs. And the decision made by the P.C. was that, though Nancy brought up some really good points, this may not be the ordinance to deal with temporary people coming in this day for a weekend, and that we prefer to keep this in law suite ordinance for long-term occupancy only. So that's the way it was written. There was an agreement by the P.C. to consider other ordinance for Airbnb's at every date. Want to add a poll?
I think it was really needed, because we, the ordinances we had matched that sort of thing. We're very scattered and incomplete. Every time one of those things came my way, I'd kind of shove it. With inconsistent language, too.
Yeah.
We didn't have a really good ordinance, and now we do. So it's all comprehensive and it's a new document, so we're happy. The P.C. did a really good job with that.
And there was another issue that we talked about, was sort of the winery breweries, and about having some kind of a space of 100 feet. We just need to get some clarification, and I'm sure we'll get back to the next meeting. All right, good. Good to that one. Any questions?
I would still have to, but I feel that the P.C. did a really good job, and I'm real happy with the P.C. We've got professional people in there, and manage these complex issues with great care and skill, so I'm real happy with the P.C. Next item, Hard and Historic Commission Chairman Paul Agassi is here. We did not meet in March, but if you had any specific comments, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I just would like to make a few notes. We, like the Board of Supervisors, had a small weather problem when we were planning to meet, and so we are planning to meet at the beginning of April. We do have an outstanding COA application in front of us for a property in the historic district, and we want to get that handled and move forward.
What's the issue that's come up? What's the issue come up? Somebody's changing a property, or?
No, no. It's a rebrewing, but it's going to involve a change to more than just the roof surface in this case, although from my understanding, I don't want to prejudge this issue, but from my understanding, I think this is.
Just curious, did you have a nature to it? I don't know if you can make that, so.
Yeah. And we also have, at this point now, our annual reports to compare, so I'm hoping that we'll be able to resolve all the issues associated with those. At the next meeting, I would also like to bring to the attention of the Board and the audience that in May, we will be co-sponsoring a talk on the history of cider making with the New London Area Historical Society. That should be May 10. I think that's my second birthday. And that's at 7:00 p.m. That'll be at the Academy, which is the Township Hall. And there'll be somebody there who's a brewer, and he'll be running the whole cider to talk about the history of cider and what they can do.
Any samples?
I have no idea.
More people than.
It might improve attendance.
Any hard cider?
Well, that's what they do. They do hard cider. But again, this is not an aspect of planning that I did. We usually split setting these up, and so I was focused really on setting up the last one, which is in Poe, and New London is handling the setting up of this one.
Interesting. Thanks, Paul.
Okay. The first item on our business agenda is the 2017 audit for the Kane Fund. Our town firm has successfully completed this year's audit. A representative from the firm will review with the Board. Can you introduce yourself?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Tim Sawyer. I'm a partner at Barbara Kane Thornton Company. I'm a partner that's in charge of your audit. So we were here in February to actually do the fieldwork on site, and we've, since then, have wrapped up. The audit report is dated the 27th of February, which means that's the day that Joan approved the draft and sent back the representation letter. And then from there, then we go ahead and we actually do the electronic submission to DCD, so that's already done as well, well in advance of the April 1st deadline. So I'm just going to give you a brief overview and answer any questions, if you have any, on the financial report. Does everybody have a copy?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll go straight to page two, where our opinion is. Okay, so I'm going to go about halfway down the page to the opinion on the regulatory basis of accounting. Now, according to the accounting that's allowed by DCD, you prepare your statements on the cash basis of accounting. So it's strictly cash in, cash out. You receive cash, you recognize it as revenue, and when you make the payments for cash in, you recognize those expenses. And in doing that, our opinion is that your financial statements are fairly presented, meaning that they represent the actual financial position of the township as of December 31st. On pages three and four of the report are the balance sheet. So you have, in here, you have your different funds. So you have General Fund, Special Revenue, Capital Projects are your major funds that you have money in, and then the Trust and Agency is where all your escrow cash sits that comes in for the various projects. So overall, you had $993,000 at the end of the year, 325 of that, which was restricted for the escrows, and that's up about $31,000 from the year before, where we were at $962,000. Since you're on the cash basis, outside of those escrow liabilities, everything else is fund balance, which means it's available up for use of the township to satisfy anything that comes up during the year. So your fund balance was $668,000. It's down about $29,000 from the year before, and that was really due to the activity in the capital projects funds, where you did some major projects during the year. Pages five through 10, breakout fuel revenues, and then pages 11 through 16 are your expenditures. And I'm going to go straight to page 15 and 16, but I will refer back to pages nine to 10. So overall, you had 2.7 million in expenditures in the year, and according to pages nine to 10, your total revenue for the year was 2.68 million. So you ended up with a slight deficit of $29,000. But again, pointing out, if you look at the capital projects fund there, you had a $90,000 loss of people. You spent more money than you brought in, but that was related to several capital projects related to roads. Couple of the major ones there, I think, were the, I hope I pronounced the road correctly, South of Greensey.
Greensey.
The paving project, the widening of it there, Conrad Mill, Hillcrest were a couple of the other ones that went on. So overall, like I said, the 2.71 million in expenses, 2.68 in revenue. Page 17, just recaps your debt. You do have two general obligation notes. They mature 2019 and 2039, and there's currently about $3 million left on those. Overall, you're in good shape. Also happy to report, we had no issues with the audit while we were here. It's a pleasure working with Joan. We've had Joe from our office, who's been here now for two years, and he hasn't had any problems while he's been out here, so they give him everything he needs to include the report while he's here. Does anybody have any questions?
I have one question. We're lucky to have Joan. She did a great job. The second page to the second underline says adverse opinion on accounting of general accepted.
I assume that is, you cannot make an opinion because you do not follow GAAP?
Correct. That's what it is, yes. Because you have outstanding debt, and the statements are used to satisfy your continuing disclosure requirements with that debt, they would require, according to our standards, you have to issue statements under generally accepted accounting principles, which means you have to do it on the accrual basis, recognize receivables, payables, all the township's assets, depreciation and your debt as well on your balance sheet.
So adverse isn't necessarily overly negative?
It's just because we don't use that basis of accounting to produce your statements, use the cash basis, which is perfectly allowable under UCD.
So Stephen, I already asked if you could change the word, because it sounds so negative. We don't do anything wrong.
I thought about it. I was like, okay, we don't do GAAP, so is it adverse or is it neutral?
It's only adverse because you don't do the GAAP basis statement. I wish there was better language for it, but that's what our standards are.
I'm real happy with the audit. We have an excellent treasurer in Joan McCall. He uses QuickBooks, and every penny comes in, and then have that system, so it's nothing that's not accounted for.
It's one of our smoother audits during the year, and she's usually ready really early, too, so it's nice for us to be able to get in early.
It's because we don't decide what we do.
If you did that, we'd probably still be here.
It's so smooth, and it's easy for you guys. Can we get it right next year?
We already negotiated that.
Yes, we did.
Thank you for your report. As I suggest, we're really happy with our treasurer, who's been on the board here. We'd have to know if she was with any of these auditors, but it could be my place to. Well, thank you for giving your report. I said you don't have to. Have a good night. Hopefully you won't be here too late.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the discussion is the pickleball court. Does anybody here wants to talk about pickleball courts? Okay. All right, you're on.
My name's Ellen, and this is my husband, Adam. We live on Den Road, so we are both taxpayers and residents.
Okay, very good.
My husband, my neighbors, and I have been playing pickleball for the last year, and we've been playing at the Senior Center in Delaware. The tennis court behind that senior center is lined for both tennis and pickleball.
Okay.
So what we were requesting with the township is that you consider lining the existing tennis courts on Carson's Road, Carson's Park, lining them for pickleball. They're already lined for tennis, lining them for pickleball.
Tennis is basically 36-foot width by 78-foot long, and your pickleball will go right inside that 20 by 44. We've got a layout here. Do you have it?
Yeah. I was going to give you the.
The same net height, correct?
Yeah. It's 36 inches on the end and 34 inches in the center. I think the one we use is the same as the tennis net.
It's got to be, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the plan, Joan, you can correct me, the plan is to use the skateboard area.
Yeah, we have another area that's not being used for anything, and we can make a dedicated pickleball court, so you don't have to worry if someone's playing tennis.
We're going to have to mess up where the skateboarders are trying to go, because now you don't install.
There's no skate board stand.
Oh, is there?
That's done. That's done. So it's fenced in. We would have to install the nets and do the spiking for you, but you'd have your own court. Not going to say no to that, are you?
How many, just trying to maybe ease you. How many people are involved?
Do you want to play? Or?
People involved in your group.
There's about six of us, and we rotate.
We don't all show up at the same time. It's sort of a casual group, you know, and we go down there and.
And grow.
Yeah, hopefully grow.
But you play regularly, right? When the weather gets good.
Well, we play regularly up until December, and then we have a place that's.
Look at our park. We've got a really nice park, but it's really underutilized.
Yes, it is.
We'll be watching to see how well we utilize this. I think we're going to do this thing. Price, we have.
It's not too bad.
It's $15.77. Well, the price for a contractor lining the court and line striking, that's $396. And he's got a core drill, some holes proposed, $570. Jim's price is like $966. Then there's a quote for equipment, which, I looked at that list, and we'll provide the equipment, but the prices here are extremely high.
Well, he showed me the net. I mean, we could chop around.
I just quickly looked on eBay. Well, we've got a $300 charge for a net and post, so I was able to find a net on eBay for $37, so I think we could probably do better price-wise. Probably need to talk to Jim about these posts and find out what we need, because if you buy dedicated sports equipment, that stuff's really expensive, and you may be able to do it with just regular pipe.
Well, the posts for the nets, they'll have rollers on them, and they can, the cranks even tighten, keep it tight. I mean, they're not just, it's not just the tack.
It's got a center post, right?
No.
It's not capable across the top of the net. It will be tacks on each side.
Yeah. So, I mean, we can, we'll chop and chop.
We'll look at it here, because that's $300 for, that material looks absorbent on the inside.
Well, that's just the post, because the net itself on here is $130.
Like I said, I saw one for $37.
Yeah. We can chop around.
And then the.
No, it was random. That hole's.
Yeah, but for material, too. You have. This was to try, you know, it's really helpful.
What's the [inaudible 00:01:52]?
To find the.
Let's go over right at the end of Schoolhouse, and on the left is.
I'm just going to buy a used net. It's a new net.
So $16.
All right. I think we can do a better job with the prices of the materials, so.
So we're ready to make the motion?
I have a question. Before the motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. I'm going to let somebody else make the motion.
I have a couple of questions. How many ports do we have? How many full sides?
Two tennis courts.
Two tennis courts, only two?
And Stephen uses a lot of time, so he can tell you they get used.
They get used if it's full, which often it is. I go up to the school. So if you then hurl one, which is, I think, where you're going, to save a couple dollars, then you're going to get the tennis people upset.
It's not that expensive.
Yeah, I think.
So at the half of that area where the skate park was, and it's empty, and it's already fenced in and everything, so we'll do a perfect location.
And it's big enough?
Yeah, it's more than big enough.
For pickleball. So we don't want to change the existing two ports, we just want to change.
That way, we would, you know, we still have the two tennis courts, and then we have a dedicated pickleball.
So it would only be one pickleball court?
Mm-hmm.
Is that going to be enough?
There's only one court at the Senior Center in Delaware. We just rotate on and rotate off, if there's more than four.
Is this the Senior Center?
You don't have like 20 people that show up?
Oh, no.
Right down in Newark on the right. It's south of Newark, right?
Yeah, if you're going into Newark, it's on the right-hand side.
Oh, yeah. I took some Spanish classes in.
Did you?
Many years ago, yeah.
So one more than we have now.
Yeah, because right now, we've got a facility that's not used. We've got a paved fenced-in area, so.
Level.
Well, it's level, and we need to strike it and put this net in. So we're only going to provide a net and a post.
We have.
Whatever.
Our paddles and balls.
So I think it's, the only issue, I think we could probably do better with some of the material.
We'll stop.
We're happy to install.
So we just need to make a motion to accept the plan to install the net and posts.
And paint the court.
And we're going to paint, we're going to do the paint as well.
With a maximum dollar allocation of X dollars.
Do you have a number?
We got a number.
What's the total?
$15.77.
$15.77.
Not exceed $1,600, but we should be able to do much better on the material than that. So, but we'll make sure we don't.
Would you like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we accept this proposal to convert the unused portion of Cross Hand Park that's flat pavement to a pickleball court and install posts and betting as appropriate for pickleball at a cost not to exceed $1,600.
A second then.
Any discussion?
It's a reasonable use of facility, so.
And we will try to keep the cost as low as possible, but.
Material costs, I think we can do better with material costs.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries five, zero, Mr. Chairman.
I prefer being so reasonable, like, when it's so little and so.
All right, we'll see how quickly we can get this done. We'll fight away for some one, or whether.
Yeah, for sure.
It looks like a lot of fun. I've seen some pickleball.
It is really fun.
But you've got to be really, it's got to be tough to win.
Uh, yeah.
Win the tournament show.
You've got to, you get to.
You've got to be.
It's hot that you're standing there with it, and it's a great game, as we go.
Hopefully you don't.
Good.
Okay.
Next.
What's next?
All right, we want to see their next one. I'll introduce it quick. Tracy Lee, speak for the Board about her concerns with safety and speed on Gypsy Hill Road. Tracy, have a good evening.
Okay. My name is Tracy Lee. I am a taxpayer and resident. I've been in this area since 1976, and a lot of those years on Gypsy Hill Road, like most of those years on Gypsy Hill Road, I'm back. I was in Newark, got married, blah, 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 came back, I'm back on Gypsy Hill Road, in a house now. I used to live in Heritage Village. And I have two children. I have three, but two of them at home. And I'm here to talk about the issues on Gypsy Hill Road, the ongoing issues that I have discussed previously two times before, but also a solution to the problem. There's a bunch of issues. I'm just going to kind of throw them at you. The speed limit on Gypsy Hill Road is 35. That does not happen. The majority of people going down Gypsy Hill Road are going 40, 50, or more. We're getting food traffic, we're getting trucks, we're getting, just, we have seen Mack trucks go down that road, which is just ridiculous. My children walk that road to come home from school on the school bus. And of course, we've told them to walk on the church side, because on the other side, if anybody's been on Gypsy Hill Road, you know that fence right on the curb? Has been taken out three times at least in the last year, in the last year. Like, two, three weeks ago, St. Patty's Day, I'm coming home and a hundred or two hundred people in my house, somebody took out the telephone pole. I mean, the telephone pole snapped in half. Apparently it was an inattentive driver, not paying attention, not used to driving a ped ski truck, whatever, hit the telephone pole and split it in half. And I had a picture on my phone, you can see all the work being done, and my house is right there. So thank God it wasn't a school day, it was a Saturday, my kids weren't walking home. It's, it's just crazy, it's dangerous. The bus stop, every morning, there's one place where the bus stop is, and it's that little, as soon as you turn right into Heritage Village, there's a turnaround there. That's the bus stop, and all the parents line up on the side, and countless times, people are, maybe not when the red lights are flashing, but when the arm is out, before he finally puts his flashlight, people are going around that. And here's, here's what happens, we're in our cars, I'm sitting in here, my son's here on the passenger side, all the kids have to get out on the passenger side, so they're stepping into the roadway. Well, the people coming this way are coming right up to where the bus is. So the kids are getting out of the car, and these people are like coming up to the bus. So you're dealing with the child getting out of the car, not just mine, and cars coming up. And then, what, a couple of weeks ago, and this is not the only time it's happened, around the arm, and my son was getting out of the car, and I was like, wow, there was a car right there. I was beside myself. If I, if I had a pen and paper, I would have taken the license plate down and called the police. It was ridiculous. So I'm like, now, and I've told John and the committee, I'm out there, my kids are like, mom, get back in the car, and I'm out there, like, standing there, so the cars can't come up to where the kids are getting out of the cars. You know, they keep, you know, they should be back where all the kids are coming out of the cars, but they're not. So the bus stop is an extremely dangerous situation, which Joan and Jeff have been making strides to get that fixed, which I really appreciate. You know, maybe the bus coming up Gypsy Hill Road and stopping at the top of D buildings, D and E, picking the kids up there, stopping at B and C, picking the kids up there, and then stopping in my driveway, right on the road, and then continuing. So we're working on that, I haven't got a call back from Barbara, but Joan's.
She left for vacation.
Oh, okay, well, you're on it anyway, so. I'm kind of a little all over the place, forgive me for that, I've got a bunch of different little notes here. I know that everybody now in this area is using this as their shortcut. And I understand it's a theater road, whatever that means, theater road or not, homes, families are on there, children are walking this road, my children are walking this road, and I'm very fearful of my children getting hit by a car. My, my son has had numerous near misses, sometimes they cannot walk on the church side. If there's snow, if it's pouring rain, they're not walking in the mud, they're walking on the very side of the road. But that's not the norm, but when they do, my son has had cars just miss him, just miss him. They're supposed to be going thirty-five miles an hour at the most, and they're going fifty. I mean, the norm is fifty on that road for a lot of people. So the cars go around the bus, the fence has been taken out, they just took down the telephone, they just cut the telephone pole in half, there's been no police presence, but I understand that they've been notified, but that's a temporary thing, I was told, that that wouldn't really take care of the problem, and I understand that. And, oh, and what, just the day that I met with the couple of the committee members, right in front of my house, this little small animal, I know that's trivial to some people, dead right there in the middle of the road, how do you hit an animal going thirty miles an hour? You try to stop. I know sometimes they just jump out, I understand that. We've had a dead fox right in front of my house, a dead fox, a dead whatever it was the other day, and how, yeah, and I know that the deer cross, I've been told by my old pastor that when he comes up that road, he sees deer crossing there every dusk, or dawn, whatever, in the morning, when the, when the light's changing, there's this deer crossing right over into our yard. I don't know how we, I don't know how we haven't had a deer, well, actually, I take that back. I had a deer in my front, in my yard, right off to the side. So there was two deer on our wood, in our woods, right there. Like, if you know where Gypsy Hill Road is, and the white fence, that's my house, right on the other side of the fence, there was two different deer since we've lived there. And, you know, people coming up that hill are zipping up to come up the hill, and they're zipping over it. So that's probably how those deer got killed. What I'm proposing is that we just put some speed humps in. I'm not asking for anything major, just a few speed humps that would reroute a lot of the traffic, in particular, some of these big trucks that are starting to use our, our road, reroute a lot of the traffic. Maybe slow down some of these people that just wanna zip and they don't wanna be hit in speed humps, reroute the traffic back on the main road. And just put these speed humps, maybe three of them, I think, would do the trick. They did put some signage up for the curve. I don't know if that's gonna mean a whole lot to a lot of people, but there is some arrows where that fence is, the fence has been taken out so many times, the Heritage Village people haven't even fixed it now. They're, I've called them and.
So it's not your fence that's.
No, not my fence. I don't wait for that to happen, but.
Well, that's been.
Yes, no, no, I didn't wanna speak that. But the Heritage Village fence has been taken out several times, they had, they did fix it and they stopped fixing it now. The telephone pole, of course, that had to be fixed immediately. But the speed humps, and I understand that it is within something that we can do. The speed humps would just slow people down, because once you get around that curve, if you make a right off of eight ninety-six and you get around that curve, it's a straightaway. And that's where everybody picks up their time, and that is right where my house is, and it's right where my kids are, and right across the street is a playground. You have to cross that street for children to get to the playground. Forget my house, there's a playground, you know, the children are. So, and they.
I need the original one to get a shot.
You know, they come right up over that hill, a lot of times they're like, and when I'm pulling out, of course, then they take real good care that, you know, nobody's gonna hit you, but anyway. So my proposal is the speed humps, just strategically placed, maybe a couple, a hundred feet or so over that hill, when you're coming up over the hill, and then maybe right before my house and then right after, and that would slow, that would take that speed right out. And we just, you have to, you have to slow down, you just have to, because it would take your car out. So that's my proposal, these speed humps, and Joan's helping me work on getting the bus stop changed. And, you know, I've been living there for two and a half years in this house. And it is a real problem, and I am, you know, it's, I'm fearful, I'm fearful for my kids' safety and I just think this is something we really need to do. Theater road or not, you still need to go to speed limit, there's families on this road, there's children walking this road, and something needs to be done before something happens. And that's why I'm here, this is my home, and I wanna get these speed humps set. Great, they're gonna make me happy and slow down that traffic, make that road safer. And that's what I like, so I hope I can, I hope you can ground something tonight for that, because this is very stressful for me to even be living there anymore. Every time I see this car speeding by, it's just, it's, it's hard, it's very hard emotionally, and so thank you for listening. I wanna be good. Talk about that.
Tracy, everything you said about the driving behavior is absolutely correct. I've seen, observed this behavior for a long time, I lived in this house for forty years, and when I first moved here, there was nothing out here, zero. There weren't any streets, nothing, no traffic. So this strange traffic, people are in such an incredible hurry. The problem we had over us was on Gypsy Hill Road, it was in our township, not in our township, but in all the townships, everywhere you go, people tailgated you, crossing the road, crossing in front of you. And it's an item that we recognize, it's something I wrote several years ago, like, we went to the board about traffic safety on country roads, and I think this will define the issue. Something I had published in a paper many times over the last few years. The original date of this document is November twenty-third, two thousand thirteen. It says, "Many residents and I have remarked about the high-speed driving of motors in Franklin Township roads. This is of great concern because of the personal safety for all of us is seriously jeopardized. In my thirty-five years of living here in Franklin Township and Pendott, I made significant improvements in the quality of roads in the form of signage, drainage, shoulder improvements, and some adjustments to curves and hills. Unfortunately, the basic configuration of our roads lacked engineering design of new roads. As our area developed, the unsealed paths had served early farms which is paved without employing engineering techniques. We have well-maintained roads that are poorly designed with bad curves, hills, bumps, and many driveways with inadequate sight distance. The cost of correcting these deficiencies is enormous, in most cases impractical because of the terrain features and the cost of land required. Our only option is to adjust our driving habits by reducing speed to make our roads safer. There are numerous reasons why people drive too fast. Modern cars, even the low-cost ones, employ technologies now that make them safer. The handling and road stability rival performance of race cars. These factors give the driver a great sense of control and confidence when traveling too fast on country roads. What many do not realize is that keeping a car on the road is on part of the safety equation. Automotive technology cannot compensate for it. Blind curbs, hills, driveways, and inadequate sight distance. Franklin Township is about halfway through our long-term road program. The paving program and road surfaces are smooth. Pendott, this is, you gotta remember, this is two thousand thirteen, Pendott did an excellent job of releasing pavement in eight forty-one, these are smooth surfaces, promote faster driving. But most importantly, we all seem to be in too big of a hurry to get somewhere. Driving slower will not significantly delay your arrival time. When thinking about traveling, consider the appropriate driving time. Don't let, get in your car and make driving time the last thing you do to adjust your arrival time and the timing error. I could talk about various accidents in Franklin Township, but I do not think the details would be added. I can tell you that nearly all of them are caused by driving too fast for the conditions. As you drive the roads, make a conscious effort to think about road configuration. Can you avoid an accident if you came over a hill around a curve and the road was obstructed? Car over the center line, car exiting driveway, deer, et cetera. So in the most sincere manner possible, appeal to you to drive safely and protect all. Something I wrote many, many years ago. It speaks to the, the driving behavior that we have right now. It's a point, there's no doubt about it. And we've looked at this many, many times over the years, and really, there is up on nothing to do to change these people's behavior.
I think that the speed humps would have to change your behavior, and we have to come up with the times, too. People are driving faster, there's more people influxing on that road. Now we need to do something about it, because they are taking out the telephone pole, the fence over and over and over. We need to get up with the times, and these speed humps would alleviate a lot, like, I would say, most of this problem.
There's issues, so Joan, who talked about this, right?
I have, I did have a meeting with Tracy a few days ago.
Yes, please.
And we discussed this issue in detail. So I suggest that she bring the issue to the entire board, so I look forward to engaging in that discussion and see where the rest of the board was. Tracy thought that I was the boss of the township. I'm one supervisor of five. Every supervisor, just for everybody's information, each supervisor has the exact same power and ability on this board. The only difference between the chairman and the rest of the board members is I run the meeting, do a lot of talking. Anybody can bring up any issue, so.
But Joan, we talked about speed bumps at Stephanie, and I thought there was reasons, and we actually have an idea, so. I think there was reasons why speed bumps wouldn't work in Gypsy Hill. There's certain belt distances and terms, and can you remind me of what we discussed?
I'm with the board, I've already made some determinations, so I don't wanna adjust everybody's thinking by telling you where I am yet. I wanna give everybody else a chance to talk about the issue and talk the issue out. Tracy and I discussed this in great detail in a meeting earlier in the week.
I understand we can't do speed bumps, but I was told that speed humps were within our, our realm of being something that we can do.
I'll clarify that point. When you think, when people think of a speed bump, you think of these bumps you see in the giant parking lot, which is a fairly aggressive asphalt hump, and they definitely slow people down. But Pendott will not allow us to put that kind of obstruction on the road. We're only allowed to put a raised surface, which is raised about four inches, and it's got a very shallow, it's twenty feet long, and it's got a very shallow slope leading up to the speed table, called the speed table.
The same we have on.
The ones we have on.
Cool school.
Pass Road.
They work.
Those, we have to follow those rules, we can't put something on there that we want. Why? Because if the township were to put something out there that wasn't in the Traffic Calming Handbook or according to Pendott's rules and specifications, and then there's an accident, we become liable for that action. So we live in a litigious society, and every little thing that's wrong, somebody makes a stupid mistake, they look for people to blame, so we've gotta follow those rules. So the aggressive bumps you would think would be effective, we're not allowed to put them up there.
But the humps are allowed, and they, to me, even me driving down Schoolhouse, are effective to me. I mean, I, you have to, even if you're going slow, you still have to slow down to that fifteen to get over that, you're gonna take your car out, you're gonna bottom out if you're going thirty-five, forty miles an hour, there's some, that one.
We did, we did have a discussion today with Stephanie, no, no decisions were made, so like you said, Joan, we want each of us to give an opinion about a sign, not a speed sign, but speed signs seem to place people to wanna beat it. But a sign that would be an electronic sign that'd say, "Slow down." And I could, I'm not a great driver, I, those things, I will slow down if I see a sign that says, "Slow down." I don't know if other drivers will, but if I see the word, "Slow down," I say, "Okay, great driver, I'll slow down." So that's something we talked, talked about. I thought there were reasons why we couldn't do speed humps or bumps, because the distance wasn't right, but maybe I misunderstood.
There are some issues at, at the upper end closer to Tracy's house, where there's all those driveways, and you have to be so.
Right, and that's, that's where you want it, and then we can't put it there, so I feel maybe that's.
There are some issues, I mean, we need more than open area.
Distance, right?
Right.
Well, there's speed humps on Schoolhouse Road that are, there's driveways all the way up to Schoolhouse Road.
You have, you have two driveways on your side and another driveway on the other side, and they're all right there. So that area would probably be.
That's where we need it, we need.
I know, I, yep, that's a problem, where you want it is, may not be possible. So that was my thing, and I think considering a sign that may, that may help, I would. I'll defer to the more experienced members of the board. I will share an opinion.
Well, I'll go next. I'm really shocked that Pendott has such a hardened attitude towards this, because I don't know that a speed bump has caused an accident anywhere. Has it caused suspensions to get some wear and tear on it? I'm sure it has. And there's probably a lot of complaints that come into our state government, and somebody has to slow down or go a normal speed and have their car go up and down at a pretty hard clip. The situation, I, I don't drive Gypsy Hill that much, but I do have a vague picture of what you're, of what you're saying. And I have zero tolerance for people driving at high speeds near children, zero tolerance. So I would never suggest that we break the rules.
That's for the speed bumps though, right?
I know, well, for hump, for, for the bumps. I would, I would definitely favor going right up to the edge of the rules and having a hump, as you say, or anything else that will repetitively, as much as we can, to stop this crap. That's my opinion. Kevin?
I would, because if it is very difficult to get a speed table in, on that road because of the, where the driveways are situated, I would see if we can get an exemption from Pendott on a speed bump and see if they would bless that, considering the safety issues and the fact that we can't get a speed hump in there, a speed table. That would be one thing I would see if we could do. But, you know, I, I mean, a little bit of a quandary, because I, I think in your situation, what you have is terrible. My gut feeling, though, is that, trying to differentiate between what your situation, which is obviously not good.
which is obviously not good with the children, and I totally agree with that. But I don't want another situation six months from now and a different road, somewhere else, somebody saying, you know, people are driving too fast in this particular road, and I know we've now put speed tables in Schoolhouse and now Gypsy Hill, and here's an argument here. I'm not a big fan of that either. So each one has to be almost an exemption which does not set precedence. I don't know, probably want to talk a little more about what we talked in our staff meeting as far as an idea to see if that helps out a little bit. I don't know if you shared that with her?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Well, I mean, Donna mentioned about the electronic signs. And I think a main problem, it's not going to stop the speeding, but that we have to get to school to do something to get those kids off the road. I mean, to me, that's my first priority because I don't care if you have speed bumps, speed bumps or whatever, those kids should not be walking that distance on that road. I mean, they shouldn't. And that's what we've been, you know, working with the school district. And by the time Jeff was done with her with the tour, she was... I think we have her convinced if people bump her, we'll go for it. So we may be able to do something there so that the kids don't have to walk on that road. And then the issue is trying to slow some of the traffic down, and that's why we talked about the electronic sign that would be flashing to, you know, be triggered whenever a car exceeded the speed limit, whatever the limit we set the sign for. It wouldn't tell them their speed, but it would tell them that they're going too fast to see if that would work.
May I give an opinion or say something? It seems like we keep talking about speed bumps and speed humps, and when I talked to John at the last meeting, there was a reason why we couldn't get speed bumps because we lose our funding on something, and okay, that's fine. But he did, you did say that we were within the ability to get speed humps, which are smaller. Now, I know you're concerned about setting a precedent, but...
Well, I didn't want to get into that. I just want to give you the issue that I pointed out was the liability issue we don't do it right. The second issue is that we would lose the liquid fuel funding for that road.
Right, but we're not talking about speed bumps.
I just want to make sure that they were the two reasons that you had to follow the rules because of the liable issue and the fact that we would lose the compensation, our liquid fuels compensation.
Right, I understand that. I'm not even asking for a speed bump, so that is out of the equation. I'm asking for the hump that is allowed, that, you know, we had discussed as an allowed thing. I don't know who has to measure these distances between the driveways. I understand that the person right across the street from me in our driveway are right next to each other. So I know that a speed bump would have to be like right over here, and that would work because you're slowing down the people that are across the street to go to the playground. Even another speed bump further down past the Millers, and then there's another driveway, just maybe somewhere in between where that cornfield is, even two would make a difference. I'll be honest with you, this whole sign thing, I was actually taught, my husband even was talking about that speed sign where it flashes your speed because we passed one the other day and we were talking about this, and he's like, you know, "Look at the speed sign." And I said, "Yeah, what do you think?" And he said, "Nobody listens to them." He said, "Anyway, slow down a little bit, but once they know that, you know..." People, the signs, people ignore the signs. That, that's a fact. We all know that. We all drive, you know, I mean, we try to drive consciously, but we all know in our life, the signs don't have as much of an impact as having to slow down to go over that little hump. Not hump, hump. So even if we got two, right where the playground is, which would take care of my driveway and the Mowers driveway, and a hump after they come over the hill, that will cover the next three driveways. Even two would be an improvement, and that's what I'm asking for. I'm not asking for a blinking sign. I don't think that's going to do anything with no disrespect, please. I'm just telling you that I've observed and I've lived on that road for so many years, and it's due and I have been nuts. I'm watching, it's just getting worse and worse. With all due respect.
Nancy, you have an opinion?
I do. We had someone come in the other day concerned about the last road. For whatever the reasons were that we put the speed bumps in at Schoolhouse, we set a precedent, and it's a worrisome precedent because unless we can qualify why one road should get speed bumps and another shouldn't, we're going to have endless problems. I live across from Hidden Fox Drive. People cut that corner all the time. They go through the neighborhood, and I could see those people asking for speed bumps. I used to live in Heather Hills, the closest my kid ever got killed, we lived on the end of a cul-de-sac, and a guy lived one house past me came flying by. I don't know that we can put enough speed bumps to make our roads as safe as they should be.
But you know what, Nancy? They're taking out our telephone poles, and they're taking out that fence over and over and over again. Next thing you know, it's going to be some kid, and it better not be mine.
Yeah, I know.
But, I mean, they're taking out, they're taking out the telephone poles now and the fence.
There's a reason why to quantify why one road will get a speed bump, another road won't, or else it will be an endless discussion of roads and speed bumps. And I defer to John for this because maybe there was some sort of criteria you came up with before, but I think I just am very concerned with continuing to put speed bumps on roads unless we can be very clear why one road gets them and one road doesn't.
Well, Schoolhouse is, no one ever questioned it.
Public residents questioned it, definitely.
No one questioned whether it was a cut through. I'm sure residents questioned the value of the speed bumps, but no one questions whether or not people cut through, and they shouldn't. They should be taking 841.
It's a public road.
It's not designed, it's a...
The difference is...
It's designed for residential, not for a thoroughfare.
The difference is that Gypsy Hill Road is a feeder road. It's one of the main roads through our township. People come south from West Road, they come down. Currency Road to Hess Mill, they turn on Hess Mill, 841, they go right up Gypsy Hill Road, and it's been that way as long as I've lived here. The traffic's increased, there's no doubt about that, but that's always been the path. So it is a, by its function, is a feeder road. And my position is I can't put a speed bump on, or speed bump on one of those roads.
Well, there is 841 to 896, and it's a lot safer. And there's things happening on our road that you just can't turn your back on.
We have, this, the situation, I sympathize with your situation, believe me, but it's all over the township. So if we begin with a precedent, then we're going to have this thing in front of everybody's driveway. I live on South Currency Road, I have a driveway that I don't use because it's so hard to get in and out. I've got a lot of this driveway which I use. So everybody's got their own issue related to the traffic. It's unfortunate that we have to think this way, but it's all over. It's just not on your road. And I understand that the heartfelt nature of your kids. I think that we do have something that would, which should improve their situation significantly if we're seeing that so successful. By changing the bus stops, it looks like the meeting that Joan had with the transportation person, Joan will let you talk rather than you talk for you. Why don't you explain what you were talking about and what you thought you might do?
Well, we asked that the bus, right now, the bus stop, as Tracy said, is at the, almost at the end of Gypsy Hill. There's a turnaround down there, and the bus pulls in, picks up the kids, and does a turnaround, and then goes back out again. So when Barbara Wallace from the Transportation Department was here, we said, "Why can't you just continue on and stop in driveway to the apartment driveways and pick up the kids instead of doing a turnaround right there?" And her first response was, "Well, the school bus companies tell me that they can't go down that road." And we had a camera out on the pole that was taken down, we lost our camera. That Jeff had pictures of a lot of buses going up and down that road, and two of them were Abbot Road School District's buses.
Oh, I thought there were other buses that...
There were other buses, no, two of them, she found out, were Abbot Road's, and there were other buses, too. But they were the same bus companies that provide transportation for Abbot Road. So the company does go up and down that road. So she was going to address it with them. Jeff took her out so that they could see the road and see if they continued on, you know, if the bus could make all the turns and everything. So she said she, she was sleeping on vacation, so that's why you haven't heard from her, but she said she would address it when she came back and, you know, try and get the powers that be to agree to make that change so that the kids don't have to walk on that road. They would be dropped off at the driveways.
Then you also would have all the parents...
Yeah, the parents would have to wait out there on the road.
Right, so that would be...
That would be a big help, but you still have the issue of these speeding cars. And I'm not going to ask anybody, but just think to yourself, do you use Gypsy Hill Road as a feeder road? Okay, you know, I didn't even want to ask anybody, but if you do, then you probably would be against these speed bumps because you don't want to deal with them. And I don't mean that with disrespect, but that is my home. That is my road that I live on. That is the safety of me pulling out of my driveway, my 77-year-old mother pulling out of her driveway. She says she pulls out, and they're right on her. Even when she looks and she, and she pulls out and boom, they're right there. Two speed bumps, that's all I'm asking for. I'm not asking you to change the world or set any precedents. This is a problem. This road is a problem. It is a real problem. I mean, and it's getting worse. It's getting worse.
The problem is the same all around this township.
Are they getting telephone poles and fences taken out all the time?
I got a pole down into my driveway that looks brand new, and the reason it looks brand new is because they replace it regularly.
Did somebody hit it?
Oh, yeah, that's why it's new. Same thing happened up there. We would have everybody who had a little problem in here asking for speed bumps.
But are they asking for speed bumps?
I just cannot, cannot put those things on a feeder road.
Why?
Because it's a feeder road?
It's a main road. It's a main public road.
It's really not a main road. The main road's 841 to 896. That is...
The main road is the road that people use, and everybody uses it, and they've used it as long as I've lived here.
And that's why they need to slow down, and the speed bumps would slow them down, too. Now I would be happy with two. That would just slow them down coming this way, slow them down coming this way. It's a straightaway. It's everybody, everybody picks up their speed there and they try to... It's about, you know, I don't want to keep it sound like a broken record. I'll just leave it there and...
So if we don't, if we don't get a speed bump, would you be more, would you be open to the sign to try?
I don't think this, I mean, I just think it's a band-aid. It's a band-aid. The only thing that's going to slow people down is that they know there's a hump at the top of that hill. "Oh, I got to slow down," and then they're going to, they'll know that, "Oh, there's another hump up there, so I really can't go too fast." So they'll come up over the hill, they'll be, you know, 100 feet, go over the hump, you know, keep going along, then there's another hump, they know they got, they got two humps they got to deal with or whatever, and it'll slow them down. And then they'll be slowed down for the curve where they keep taking out the fence. Two bumps. I mean, is anybody else coming in here begging for speed bump, humps?
We got, surprisingly, we got another letter here.
Right, next to you.
From a woman.
I want Appleton, though, so I can know that.
Oh, that's a state road, though.
Are you, are you Liz? Oh, okay.
And then we get others saying, "Don't do, don't do a speed bump," and they get upset. So we get, we get old, we get old signs.
We contacted Pendott for Liz because it is a state road. And Pendott says, "We are not doing speed bumps, we're not doing rubble strips."
And there was one other thing they're not doing.
What are they doing?
Bumps and strips.
So there's nothing that they can do because the cars launch themselves off of 896.
Yeah, and that's what, I mean, I've been there since last July, and I'm alive, and it's the same cars all the time. I have a letter from Sergeant Carton, because I reached out to Pendott. Did you see that?
I read both the letters, just a little.
And, you know, so he volunteered to, you know, beef up the presence as far as posting, posting cars further down Appleton, but apparently it's just proximity where the speed sign, or the speed limit sign is located, that they have to, the cars have to have, God forbid, 500 feet in which to slow down, which I don't think is right. So I guess there was talk of perhaps putting a slower speed approaching sign. I would like to, I'm going to ask you guys, that's one of the reasons I came today. I was going to buy on Amazon. I mean, it's, like you said, it's a band-aid, but the driveway where your kids live here or slow down signs, just the ones on the little metal things that I can kind of stick in my yard. My neighbor's cat got creamed in front of my house, and I was like, as much as I'd been, you know, thinking about coming forward and talking about this, seeing that and having picked the cat up off the road, I was like, I have to do something. Because he has, I have no children, he's got a daughter who's going to be two years old, and he's a renter. I own my house, I pay taxes, you know, I don't know what his situation is, but I think just the quality of all our lives on that road are, we suffer because I go to check my mailbox, and I have to go...
Yes, that's what I do.
Or like, oh, we ordered stone for our driveway, and the stone got dumped right on in between my house and Mr. Eastburn's, and I was out there with my shovel and my wheelbarrow, and people, they didn't even give me two inches. And I'm a grown-up, so I can only imagine, you know, with children and the situation you're dealing with. But so, so I would like to, I would definitely like to, if it's okay with you guys, buy some signs on Amazon, put them out there. There's nothing that I would screw with a telephone pole, just something in my yard. And then I, you know, and he did, he did say that they're going to try and bring some more police presence out, but I would be satisfied with some type of sign like that.
You can't stop right there.
The police presence...
She has a right to do that, right? Yeah, go for it.
I will.
The police presence has a, has a limited deterrents. When they're there, it's a deterrent.
They got away, the next car...
I'm going to buy a police car, and I'm just going to park it there.
They're all beautiful, you know?
They get two turns.
Because it is, it's really sad. I mean, like you said, my mom is 76, and she's, she's terrified because like whether she drives out forward or backs out, it's...
See, the state police will not take anyone coming off of that road if they stop with a stop sign because they said they have to have enough time to...
Right, exactly.
So they, they won't do anything.
It's really frustrating. It's really...
But, so John, isn't the speed limit on Appleton the same as 896?
Yeah.
No?
It's 25, it's 25 in Village, and 35 in Township.
35 down there.
Well, it's 35 there when the school lights aren't flashing, but nobody does 35.
Nobody pays attention to that.
So they launch themselves, I mean, I know, I have that...
You're talking about stop and traffic.
Yeah. And they should...
It's ridiculous because there are stop signs on either end, and my house is kind of like smack dab in the middle of these stop signs, and you're coming from one stop sign to the other, 50 miles an hour in that little tiny stretch road.
They're right there.
And I totally, I understand what you're saying, it's just it's...
We had, when we were working on Old Schoolhouse Road, we had police up there as a deterrent. If they had time on their duty roster, they would sit there. They were ready to take it from 55 to 60 miles an hour.
Well, I believe it, I believe it.
Now, it's a deterrent to the person that gets the citation, but it's temporary. It's only for that person and at that particular time.
Because I'm getting inquired about one of those, your speed is signs, and that's what I was told, that sometimes it makes people go faster, but...
That's absolutely, that's what we were talking about.
We were not going to put our speed on that.
Right, they slow down.
But if, and I wanted to approach you guys tonight about perhaps doing some type of sign like that on Appleton, you know, somewhere in this vicinity to maybe just make people think twice about, about how fast...
Feedback that we got were on these electronic signs, which is a radar unit that measures the speed of the traffic and displays the speed. We got that from the state police, is that they're not affected.
Okay, but it'll slow down, perhaps the flashing slows down?
Well, someone even tried to, even tried to tag the needle on the sign, so there's some idiots out there that hate that.
But there are some that would do slow down, so I'm telling you, we're...
Unfortunately, I mean, the road, speed limit on, a safe speed on our roads is about 25 to 30 miles an hour throughout the township, and that's usually the way I drive. I've lived there a long time, and I've got people ducking me up the road, passing me at spots that are inappropriate, so it's not just here, it's everywhere. And I understand your problem, I sympathize with it, but I don't see how to manage this driver behavior.
The only thing that's going to help your situation is when Pendott redoes the...
Well, I actually, I spoke with Representative Lawrence today just to kind, because there's some project, and so that, he was saying 2020 is when they're looking to...
They're going to do that project.
2020, I think, is the...
Yeah, but there's, there's a little bit of, like, kind of, I guess, a proposal to...
Look, that, I'll tell you, there's no good solution for that interception.
I know there's not, I know there's not. And it's a shame because what would fix my problem a little bit would hurt, I guess, the people who live right there.
It's going to turn into a stop, a three-way stop, which I can tell you, there'll be an enormous up, out.
Right, so there's no, I mean, there's no, there's no, it seems like there's no perfect solution to many.
There isn't enough land there to do anything reasonable.
But so, but so I just, I mean, I really looked at planning, because I found signs on Amazon, so I figured I could at least buy some signs, stick some signs out there.
Might, to summarize.
And I still, I still feel for what you're, I mean, I can only imagine, you know, yeah, it's, it's, it's not fair because, right, it just, I understand that these are not country roads anymore, but people don't realize that we live on these roads, you know?
We all live on these roads. I live on the road, there are other folks here that live on these roads.
My kid just died six months ago.
Yeah.
They hit my car.
So anyway, on the speed bumps, it's, it's really no problem. I don't order the rest of the work basically.
I would go for a speed bump. I would. And I would, I would have no problem telling other people that your situation's unique. We don't put speed bumps on every road. We don't put them in every neighborhood. We put them where they're needed. In this particular case, I think there's a special need.
So I would be against the hump, the speed bump. I just think it is a feeder road. I don't, we're really, I can't, Tracy, I can't, because I, it's everywhere. I don't know that it would solve. I would love for you to have a safer road to live on. I'd love for us all to have a safer road to live on. I'd bike ride. You know, that's just taking your life in your own hands every day. But I don't, I don't, I can't do it fairly. Unless there's a way to do it fairly, I don't know how to do it.
Fairly to who?
Anyone else who wants a speed bump.
Well, like Dave, Dave said, it's a unique situation. I mean.
I, you have, you have more than your share for that particular area for residential road.
And two humps.
I, I live in a neighborhood and we don't have hiding humps or bumps. I don't even think we have, we don't have signs. We don't have signs to say.
Well, they don't have, why do they do it?
He would think, but I once in a while catch one of my neighbors, generally it's a teenager, turning a corner at the bottom of my road and gunning it. And by the time they get to my house, they're going a pretty harshy clip. And then they have to slam on the brake to get to the stop sign, which is two houses past me. And they don't get that. They're like, what does that do for you? It wears down your brakes, it wastes your gasoline, and you put all the kids in the neighborhood, there's kids all around my house who are in danger. And I have stopped them. I have pushed them out there. Whoa, whoa, what are you doing? Think about what you're doing. You're destroying your life. You're blowing money, you're blowing your chance of going through life without killing somebody by mistake. And, and for what? For five, maybe not even five seconds. Getting closer to your destination.
People just think they're faster, but for the most part, you drive, you drive reasonably, you're not going to change your arrival time very much. But that's not, that's not a message we were able to convey to the drivers. I just don't see a change in that. I'm unhappy with it. I sympathize with you.
So it's kind of reached up to us to, between signs or just like community presence perhaps to, you know.
Well, I was wanting for a signage, so I was, I just want to make sure I put my name on the sign thing, that we would put a slow down sign.
How about children of the way?
Well, I mean, there's, we have multiple options. I'm, I'm happy to, without.
The humps are the solution, truly. But I know everybody has an opinion, just like, that's my opinion.
Tracy, I think, I think if we, if the bus stop will change in a way that.
That has to be done.
That would be good.
That would be an enormous improvement for your children to take them off the road related to your driveway. I don't back out of your driveway. That's just not a, not a safe thing to do. That's where I am.
Stephanie, do you want to?
No, that kind of said what I was thinking. I, I, again, I feel free very much. I just, I just don't like, if in hindsight, was Schoolhouse Road a mistake or was it worthwhile? There's both arguments, there's arguments on both sides. And I just believe that there will be more and more people, right or wrong, your case may be more severe, that, that come down the road and for school, uh, school homes. As speed, as speed to humps throughout the township. I would like to see what might change with regards to the, the bus situation. And I wouldn't have a problem. Donna and I were talking earlier today about putting a, something that says, slow down, slow down, slow down. That cannot hurt. Maybe it helps a little bit. And also the device that we're talking about does help with regards to a traffic studying in itself, so we would have more data as well.
At the, sorry, Stephen, at the playground, is it the church playground or is it a public playground? Could we put a crosswalk in there? With the stop sign that stops when there are people on the crosswalk?
Across the street?
On the street, on the street. Could, do the kids from the apartments use the playground?
I, I don't know. There are, I'll look over and there'll be kids. I don't know where they came from. I don't know if it's a church. I think a lot of it's a church. But there's a whole bunch of little kids that live in Heritage Village. So, and I see people crossing the street with their dogs and walking over there. I don't know where the people are coming from, but I know even me crossing the road to get to my neighbor's, neighbor's house, I'm like.
Could we put like a yellow sign, a white sign, what color it is, and it's across walkers, paint the road white with those white lines?
Well, the church has not been particularly supportive.
I don't think that. I mean, I'll be honest with you.
There was a request.
I don't think that's the answer, but.
Where, where do they?
Involved. Before I was involved, but they asked to be able to turn around in the.
The buses asked to be able to turn around in the church parking lot.
Oh, okay. And that's simply a crosswalk.
All right.
I, I don't.
Just giving an attitude.
You have to figure out where the crosswalk is going to.
You know what, honestly, not to, I think we're getting off the subject. I don't need, I'm not asking for a crosswalk. I mean, if the people slow down, they're going to be slowing down for whatever's going on on that road. It's going to be, they're going to be, they're going to have to slow it up at that speed up. If somebody's, they'll see somebody coming across the road. They'll see somebody pulling out of the driveway. They'll see an animal crossing the road. They'll see the kids walking down the street. Maybe they're not getting off the, off the bus. Maybe it's in the summer and the kids are walking better. The speed bump will slow them down. I don't think flashing lights is just going to, you know, this, that, the other thing flashing, that's, that's not the answer. It's not, I've been living on that road since I was 76, off and on. And not that that makes a difference, but I've been a taxpayer and a resident for years and years and years. And I'm coming to my board to get something done. And it doesn't, I mean, I don't know how this is looking to pan out, but I'm very unsatisfied if this doesn't go through because there is every reason in the world for this to go through unless it's inconveniencing somebody. A feeder road, I couldn't care less if it's a feeder road. It's my road. There are, there is a road for people to drive on, 841, 896, and it's actually safer to do that because when you're pulling out of Heritage Village, people are coming right up over that hill. There's just so many reasons not to take that road. Stay on the main road. And then again, all these, this big traffic, but I'm coming to my board looking for, you know, I have a, a solution to this problem. I know the way to defer it. And I don't know how this is going to pan out, but.
Tracy, I think we have a consensus opinion here for one, that we don't want to do this. That's what I got, so.
Because we're trying to look out for everybody.
I'm not asking you, I mean, every, I mean.
No, you're not.
Yeah, and you are. I'm just saying, this is our problem on this road and it is real. It is severe. I mean, when you start taking out the telephone poles and the fence three times, you can't ignore that. I mean, that's what I'm saying. You know what? We need to do something here. And it doesn't have to be flashing lights and bells and whistles. A speed, and a speed bump.
But, but you, so you, you come in, come in and you asked us for something very specific.
Yes.
And, and I think you've heard.
You don't want to do it.
That, and we are putting other ideas out there and you're not, you're not interested.
And, and, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful. I just think it's a band-aid. And people are going to, oh, there's a speed sign there. Boom. Once they get the gist of that, oh, there's a slow down sign. Okay, boom, there's nothing slowing down. They'll, they'll, they'll get the handle of that after they go through a couple times. You know that. You know that. But.
I don't be a smart aleck, but the best way to slow people down is to stop fixing the roads. Don't slow right down. They will slow right down. We can have problems everywhere.
Hell, yeah. That's, that's not a, that's not an option either. No one has accused you of being disrespectful.
No, no, I'm not trying. I'm just.
We all appreciate this. You can, even, even those that don't agree with me, we appreciate this issue and, you know, we know that it's a problem all over, not just in our township. And, you know, there is no magic wand and, and I, I still stand on the fact that, that every road is unique. And you can't just say, well, we're not going to do anything to any roads just because we have to be there. That's, that's, that doesn't flow with me. Every road, we have residential, we have thoroughfare roads. You know, you can't say that I-95 is the same as I-96. They're not, they're both thoroughfare roads, but they're not the same there. Gypsy Hill, I'm going to look at it again myself. And I would, I'm going to ask you to come back after we change, changing the bus stops.
Well, we should have something by, mainly by next month's board meeting.
And, and, and think hard about some of the other options that have been discussed, like signs. And none of, none of them are going to work for everybody. But I can, I can tell you this. I, I personally, when I see those signs that say your speed is, I slow down. I take my foot off the gas and then start thinking, what is the speed limit on this road? And then I think, okay, if it's 45, oh, I was doing 50.
Or maybe if you think there's a cop, like, what if they're.
Yeah. It just, because you know, sometimes it's so on the back, you're such a big hurry to get some, you're like, oh my God, who's going 45 miles an hour? What? So I, I don't want the numbers, but I do think it's something, but.
Or children next play.
Yeah.
Also, you know, you got, it, you can't say it doesn't do anything. I mean, if I, if I knew that there's an area where there's a lot of children, I'm looking out because I know that children are not, you know, there could be a ball like this where it goes, uh, rolling along the street.
Many years ago, a good friend of mine, who was a neighbor of mine, was driving his truck into a neighborhood and hit a kid on a bicycle. He didn't kill the kid. He hurt the kid. And the kid had to go to the hospital. And this guy was a very honest, you know, hardworking, follow the rules kind of guy. And he just, the kid just jumped out of the road from, but it messed him up for a long time. That guy was not himself for, I'm going to say 10 years. Everything, every time you talked to him, he just kept thinking about that bicycle incident. And I do not want that to happen. I really hope that people will, you know, learn that you can't be driving with speeds. And I don't, I mean, I, I don't care. I've had guys behind me beating the horn. Sorry, sorry, buddy. I'm going to give you all the speed limit, right? Or, or an appropriate speed, you know, when we have ice on the road, you slow down below the speed limit. And heavy rain, same thing. But I hope you bring this back to us and, and think about the signs. And I think everybody in the board, you know, is going to be thinking about this. There's no way that your talk was for naught. There's going to be some, more thought put into this. Does that help?
Okay. Tracy, thank you for your time.
Thank you for listening.
Good luck, Tracy. Good luck.
Thank you.
Who wants to do this next question?
I would, on Appleton, I would be, I want to.
Okay, I'll be.
This is now would be. Yeah. I mean, because I know I'm, I'm sorry.
I know, I'm still whispering over there.
I feel, I don't know, in my conversations and just reaching out to PennDOT, I know Appleton Road is not a candidate for any type of speed table, you know, I mean, I totally get that. But for me, a slow down sign, I would be, I would be, you know, I understand your situation still be different. And it's a neighborhood versus, you know, I don't have a bus stop. But you know what's crazy? The buses go really fast down Appleton Road too. I'm watching, I'm like, yo, you're a lot, you know? But if, if there is any way for the township to consider putting a flashing slow down sign at some point in that, or, or even like before, after, someplace, just to kind of make people think twice, I would, I would agree with you.
So you'd be, see, we can always, they're expensive, don't get into it. And I know we can talk about this again, but I think Gypsy Hill has the priority.
Oh, right. Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah. Okay, okay. I understand.
But, but we are, we'll have to see, right? But, but you're, you're so, I mean, she's very, she's scared. Like, you can tell she's scared.
It's, yeah, I mean, it's a shame. It's just a shame. But yeah, I'm under my signs. I'll put my sign, you know, I've already talked to my neighbor. I mean, like I said, he's got a little kid. I, you know, so he and I are kind of, you know, in cahoots in this, put our signs down. And you never know. I mean, maybe that will make at least one person slow down. But I figured it didn't hurt for me to ask. And, and I'll wait when I become active.
Just be, just be.
No, go ahead, because we're going to move on to the.
We're going to move on to the next agenda.
Okay, well, if this had nothing to do with speeding, I just wanted to ask you guys, with regard to the house, where did the intersection, where the porch has collapsed? Has anything or anyone?
They're on it.
We're, we're on it.
In fact, I was sending another email today and, because I contacted him and he's waiting to see about what the police say and if they can find who did it and if it's restitution. And I said, you can't wait for that. You know, you've got to act on it. And like, sending a list of concerns from our zoning officer. So I mean, that's, that's my first step. To see if he will address the issues. And if he doesn't, he will be violated.
Okay. I see. Because it's like, I mean, aside from being a real safety hazard, it just looks terrible. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and Joan and I have been talking about it too.
Apparently it was malicious.
Really?
Just run, run.
Just started the former run?
Well, the witnesses said that somebody with a black pickup truck tied a chain to one of the posts.
Are you kidding me?
Trying to slow down on that.
In that, in that, in that first snowstorm we had before the.
Before the whole thing.
The two center posts came out.
Right.
And I, I called him about that and I said, you know, something's happened. I didn't know if it was a wind or whatever. And, but then when I was driving out that night, I looked, there were tire tracks on the yard. So I knew that something happened with that. And then the next, what was it? Was the same happening, same weekend or something? One of those weekends, the neighbor saw, the relative might saw a truck attached chain to the post and pulled it out and then it would hang down.
If you look at the back of that house, that's kind of, it looks like that house has been really bad shaped. He needs to do that.
Kind of shady.
It's an historical building.
Is that part of the agreement?
Do you know what, is that what I call?
They actually have, as part of the Landover Plan, there's an agreement to bring the house up to standard.
Okay.
So it's, there's actually a written agreement, independent of anything having to do with the sources for PISMR, that sets out an obligation to maintain that.
But that's not being done.
All right. I, well, we've talked.
Okay, you guys want?
Yeah, Joan, Joan's well aware of it. And I talked to Joan about it. And needless to say, it's a, a little slight.
Jack O'Callaghan says a violation, but we're ready to go if we don't get anything. Yeah, see, we're, we're going to nice route if that doesn't.
No, I understand. You're trying to.
All right, okay. Is that satisfactory?
No, no.
Very good.
Okay, so I'm going to make a, make a motion. So I'll make a motion that the board supervisors adopt Resolution 201813, issuing a hundred license to Franklin Sportsman Association for the 29 season. Can I second?
I'll second that.
So we're going to have some discussion. I just want to comment that I'm very impressed by all the work you do to support the community. Just, just the pictures you send out with the trees just shows, I mean, you guys are out there working, you're working hard and it really makes a difference. So I'm very supportive of what you're doing. I'll be supportive of this vote.
I'd like to request that you consider cutting the fork on. I'm not sure what else we should do there, but it, it doesn't seem unreasonable to keep that path cut, the Hogan Trail.
We have already mowed it.
It's already been, somebody's already mowed it. Jim was mowing it for a while and then somebody else started.
There's a guy in the brim floor down there that's been mowing.
Dick Winkle's been mowing it.
He was mowing. One of the other guys in the club's been mowing.
Well, Dick's not in the club.
No.
Yeah. I, I think it's something that if the board consider taking that on, I think it'd be a great public service.
I mean, I've done it multiple times in the past.
Unregularly.
Lately, because it's been mowed, so.
I think he'd stop if someone else took it on. I think the problem is, a lot of people use it, a lot of people walk on it and...
I mean, I, we're, we're ready in it, ready to mow it if it needs it.
So what we can do is communicate to him that you'll take it on, and then he'll stop mowing it. Okay, that'd be great.
Why, why wouldn't you just let the people that are doing it, do it?
Because the person doing it just had a heart attack, he's a volunteer, he just lives near there, so he's doing it...
Well, somebody else might pick it up. I mean, but all, all these trails have been maintained by volunteers.
Right, my point is, I think it's, I think it's fantastic you guys hunt, I, I think, you know, you, it's great. I also think it's nice to give back to the community for, it's a pretty valuable entity.
They, they already give back tremendously.
Let me finish, John. Um, you know, I look at the number of hours that you contribute, that's, that's great, but I, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask you to take on that path. And if that means every two weeks in the summer or whatever, I think it'd be great.
It was doing it, and other people started doing it, and it's like, well, I'll do it tomorrow, and then I come home and it's done, so.
Gotcha, so that's a fair, I think they would need to know that either they back off, or they don't complain that they have to do it, so, right. And I'd be happy to kinda just say, look...
Not a problem.
That'd be great. I, I think it'd be really, I mean, I love it, um, it's a lovely path, and I, I think it, I just don't know if we can keep counting on, on Dick to keep doing it.
I wish I could.
Any other discussions?
I mean, I'm tired of the satisfied with the group and the way you guys behave. I think you're great stewards of the land, the conservationists, and you pay attention to what's going on in the preserves, and we sincerely appreciate it, certainly appreciate all the service projects you've done. They're significant savings to the con, to the township as a result of that. A lot of the work you do, our guys don't wanna do it. So certainly we, we appreciate that, so. Any other comments?
I'm also very, very appreciative of all your work, all the good will that you've put forth and keep the township a great place to hunt.
Yeah, I know, um, saltwater meadows floating around going up on, on white clay, and there's some, worse than shoes with some trees.
Yeah, there's a tree, there's a tree blocking white clay crescent, so.
So we'll get up there, we'll be on the permits.
Nobody else goes up there other than you guys anyways. Nancy, you ever run up there? Don't...
I don't start or...
It's like younger.
I can't, I can't get there.
But there's windstorms, but there's windstorms we had, there's trees down. It's outside our township, but if you drive up towards Jenner'sville, there's a tree came down on top of the house. Or, not like dead center, but the corner of the house off.
All right, so...
Okay, so, we vote or? And so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All, all against? So those five zero, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Jim, thank you very much. On the next one, board supervisors like to acknowledge Resolution 2018-10, Declaration of Emergency adopted March 7th, 2018, to allow the township to apply for aid should money become available to reimburse expenses from the March, um, 5th and 6th storm. This time, no money has been made available. Obviously, that's the same thing, it's a similar one. Board of supervisors like to acknowledge Resolution 2018-11, Declaration of Emergency was adopted March 20th, to allow the township to apply for aid should money become available to reimburse expenses from the March 20th to 21st storm. This time, no money's been available. Just, just for the public's information, uh, we did have a snowstorm some years ago that cost us 60,000 bucks that did one storm. And, uh, we did apply for an emergency, we did declare an emergency, all supervisors signed that declaration. And we always do that as a precaution, and the state of Pennsylvania did declare an emergency, and we got 75% of our money back, so. It was like $45,000, that's, that's a windfall for the township, that's not my money, so that's why we do it.
And we had to do it before the storm. So that's why you see these here, even if, we don't know what's gonna, oh, no, we have to do this.
Jeff D. Spern runs out in the middle of the storm, stops at everybody's supervisor's house, gets a regular sign, so.
And it would allow us to call in extra equipment if we needed it without going through the bidding process, we would handle the emergency any way we need it to, as long as we have this in place.
You want to make the next motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just seeing if we can get through this thing here.
I make the motion that the board supervisors authorize the solicitor to advertise ordinance 2018-01, updating the township's code, Chapter 27, to delete Section 27-1712, Residential Conversion, and references to the term granny flat, and adding the term additional living unit. And a new section, 27-1721, governing additional living units for enactment at a future meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so this is what I talked about early in the meeting, the PC took this on to create an ordinance that made it clear that it was acceptable to have these, these additional living space, um, in, in certain houses and, and additional buildings based on certain requirements in the ordinance. And this is not about temporary, it's not about there being there, people coming and running, it's, it's, it's about someone who comes and will permanently live, um, in this, in this area, to extend a period of time. And the expectation is, is written in the ordinance, that the person would be living there. So it's not like the owner goes off somewhere, they're there, and then they have this additional living space for another person. So that's what's been worked on by the PC. And now we have it presented to you, hopefully you reviewed it, and if there's comments, we should take those comments in.
Yeah, I'm satisfied, but I attended all the meetings, and I think the residents could see how much effort they're into this thing, and the discussions it took to develop this bit to get an ordinance. Cause you, when you write an audit ordinance, there's a thing called unintended consequences. So you think you've written it well, and then other things that you didn't attend come up. So the PC's really very good about that, and hopefully this one's gonna be a solid ordinance, with their best effort in it, I'm really pleased with it. It was something that occasionally would come up in the township here, and for one reason or another, we didn't have to deal with it, but I always kinda took a side of belief that went away, because we didn't have an ordinance that really matched it well. So now we do, so. That's my comment.
Any further discussion? Anyone else? In that case, all those in favor, first signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries, finds here, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. I'll take the next one. I'll be leading this year's Great American Clean Up. So just to let people know, um, for Franklin Township, it'll be April 21st. If it rains 21st, we'll do it on the 22nd. Anybody who needs community service, great, we'll, Joan will help us figure out how to do letters for that. I guess the plan is that you'll either clean up your own neighborhoods, or we'll assign your road. So it'll start at eight, and we'll meet here, um, go through noon, safety vests, gloves, et cetera. We offer, there are some other groups doing a cleanup that same day, so we just, I think, New London has a cleanup, and I think the, the park over on Flint Hill and Strickersville is doing a cleanup that day too.
Is it a national thing or a state?
What is a national thing, but...
Pennsylvania supports it, because they give us all the material, the bags, the gloves, the safety vests and...
If, if someone wants to organize it in their neighborhood, uh, we can furnish the, the gloves, the vests, and the bags ahead of time.
David Port, right, yes.
They have it to us.
If we only precaution, I see, just with the word kids, you have to be careful with little kids.
Oh, yeah.
Just a quick story, we had one, how many years ago?
Your brownies?
When they had that brownie, they had that brownie tree down there. Yeah, that was about 12 little brownies, and I'm thinking, man, no way, I'm gonna put that out on our roads. So we sent it down to the park.
Okay.
And I didn't think there was much trash down there, but they pulled a whole lot of stuff out of there.
It is amazing.
So anyway, for any little kids, we'll do, we'll manage that Saturday morning here. We can't find any of those little kids out there. Most people come in here and they just wanna clean up their own neighborhood, so that, that works out pretty well.
It's sad, but there's so much trash, I mean, you know...
It's incredible to have trash. Look at the stuff that you guys picked up over there on Chesterville Road, just enormous bags of stuff, so. Another bad behavior by people driving around.
Yeah, I don't know what they're, what they're thinking.
I don't know what they're thinking, throw stuff out the window. I have a secother driveway at the bottom of the turns of the road, and occasionally somebody at McDonald's hunts in there and leaves the bag there.
How far does it take getting your house a turn?
I went just past your road, John, uh, Kearnsy, on Pennock Bridge, the one year that I did it, I think it was two years ago. And I made some sign for the discoveries.
Oh, yeah? I'm sorry. What was the prevalent beer can brand found?
I found stuff there, and it just like, out and...
My neighbors found, um, down in the, down in the ditch where it gets real steep, they found a brand new stop sign and a brand new South Kearnsy Road and Pennock Bridge Road zone, so.
So that's just vandalism.
Saved the township.
Oh, you used it, you were a salesman.
You used it, yeah. About a thousand bucks in signs, so. Anyway.
Lemonade at 11, John, good job. All right, let's go next.
All right, let's go back, let's get this thing going here.
Okay. So, is it you, or David, or...
That should be me, since...
Okay, step on.
Excuse me.
This is unfortunate.
This is definitely a work on the house, and significant discussion.
I make motion that the board supervisors approve the proposal from Stan Tech for approximately $16,400 to evaluate and task Peter Christopher Drive, Benjamin Run, and Peacedale Road.
I'll second that.
Seconded by David. Discussion.
So, John, maybe, we're gonna public of why we're doing this.
I mean, that sounds like a normal amount.
Here's the issue, we had a, um...
Yeah, for what they're, what they're going to do.
Okay. We had a major road contractor do some road work for us on Peacedale Road, and in a neighborhood called Brothers Drive, one of the two roads of Peter Christopher and Benjamin. And at the recommendation of our road engineer, we used a unique process to, um, prepare that road. Our contractor did all the base work we had, and the older neighborhood, it's one of the problems you have, is there were no inspectors then to inspect the roads, so. And that was usually the last thing the developer did, so they always shortchange the base materials in the building of the road, you need, Jim, 10 to 12 inches of stone as a base, and then four and a half or five inches of, um, your base asphalt, which is the big stone, the 19 millimeter stone, and then the wear coat, which is an inch and a half of fine aggregate asphalt, which is eight millimeter stones.
At 95, uh, 25, is your black asphalt.
So, anyway, uh, the developers done a good job with that, so we found many issues with, um, with discontinuity in the base, and we were able to identify those by corings and by using a roll test, which would take a, uh, a triaxle dump truck with a load of stone, and it's probably, what, 70, 80,000 pounds?
Yeah.
And we'd drive that around the neighborhood very slowly, and we'd watch the action of the back wheels, and if they moved, then, oh, there's something there. So we spent a whole lot of time, uh, preparing that area with the base. And contractor that we gave the paving job to inspected that road with our contractor, and satisfied with all the work we did, and that he did his paving. Which was a neat process called cold in place, where you grind up the existing roadway, you pull that material up into the, uh, into a hopper, and then they apply, uh, various materials, asphalt, and, um, sometimes Portland cement and other materials, and then that material is reapplied to the road. We get about five or six inches of, um, this cold in place material, and then you put the, um, the wear coat on top. Unfortunately, we've had some significant failures down there, and it appears to be with, um, the quality of this contract, quality of work that this contractor did. And, and you can't see underground, so how do you figure out what's wrong with it? And so we've, um, had the contractor look at it, of course, he's been in all different kinds of things, and, uh, it's very hard to prove, um, who was wrong here, but there are two parties here that I believe were responsible. One is the contractor, and the other is our inspector, engineer, which is our engineer, or, I'll say engineer. And for a while there, they were all points fingers. So, um, township's got a significant amount of money invested in this, John, what do you think we got into there in your house?
Well, brothers by, to leave, but remember we started, it was about 180,000, then we have Peacedale.
Peacedale Road, so we're, we're upping to close to 300,000 dollars in, uh, work that has got some substandard capability, those substandard characteristics. So what this, um, contract is proposing to do is to do a very thorough evaluation of the road and its subsurface conditions, and identify specifically what's wrong with it, so that we can use this information, uh, to go back to the contractor and recover some damages. But it's not a very cheap contract, it's more expensive. We talked about this for a while, and we finally got the proposal at $16,400 for this inspection, so. Question is, um, do you think it will pay dividends if we do this? And it's some concern on my part, because, um, we did have Pendup came in here, who's got some, not responsibility, but they've got some money in this, I think, cause some of the, uh, liquid fuel money is provided by Pennsylvania, uh, the state of Pennsylvania are involved in this. And their engineers advised us that we didn't, they didn't think we could get any money back out of this contractor. What was reading? Just from experience, it was, it was Val Tominio.
Terry Hirsch.
Terry Hirsch, both highly experienced people, and they said, look, you're not gonna get anything out of this guy. And I just really lost my sense of honor maybe, because we put a lot of the taxpayer money into this thing, we're not getting what we asked for. So really, that's the question.
Well, so, Mark, I guess I have a question for you. What is the likelihood of LTL paying for this assessment, since we pay LTL to ensure that there's a successful project completed? And then if there's not much luck of them, um, paying for it, I guess what's your view of the likelihood that we can sue?
They already sent them a lot. Then we already sent them a lot, we already sent LTL a lot.
We did send them a lot, correct.
Put them on notice.
Well, I think they should pay for the assessment. I don't know how reasonable that is, but isn't that what we pay them for, is to make sure that it all works out?
We did, they, they're definitely lying to me.
Would they, if they take court, and can we then use this information against them?
It, it would be the damages that the township incurred, it may not be the entire amount of money, you know, I mean, the, the problem being, when we had the meeting with LTL and the contractor, everybody's kind of going like this. Contractor says, you know, we didn't do anything wrong. LTL says, well, we, we did the proper amount of inspection that was necessary, no one was gonna admit that there's anything wrong with the road, and we were kind of left with a situation where we didn't necessarily have enough information to say, you did something wrong, or you did something wrong. We knew someone did something wrong.
So we need, we need to have it studied.
And they had it studied.
And then study, and that's why we engaged in this particular, and we searched pretty hard, we didn't, it wasn't an easy thing to find somebody who's qualified to do it.
Well, and you didn't, wasn't tied to the contractor or...
Wasn't tied to these things, because a lot of the labs that some of these guys used are same labs that our contractor used, and can't, so it had to be fully independent, that's why it took us a while there.
If we got, if we got into a situation where we went to either arbitration or court, could we sue in addition for the $16,000 that we're paying for consultant if we won?
We could, yeah. I mean, that's a, that was a, that's a damage.
We're not gonna get it all back anyways, we're probably lucky if we get, I mean, we won something, right? We're not gonna get $300,000 back.
Well, not in the insurance business, I can't make predictions, um, but...
We got $100,000.
The contractor and, and the engineer has errors and omissions insurance, and you can make a claim and, and, um, you know.
But I think we can all agree, if we don't do anything, if we don't do this study, we don't have a chance. We have no evidence.
We have no evidence, you need...
Yeah, I think we left the meeting that we had with everybody, kind of with the understanding Yeah, I think we left the meeting that we had with everybody kind of with the understanding that we needed more information.
Because basically, Mark, what you advised us is that you need something that's qualified, a study that's qualified, that can define the damage in order to even approach these people.
Exactly.
And we had someone from, what was it, wasn't Pendott?
Well, Allen Myers did some studies, but they supplied the asphalt, so they're not independent. I, the question I had when I saw this and the amount of this was, you know, we're putting out a lot of money. What guarantee that we have that we're gonna get an answer? And Jeff wrote us in with that question, and the engineer who did this said that she feels pretty confident that in the seventy to seventy-five percent range that we would be able to define what the problem was.
And the next question is, would we get anybody to pay anything in damages? To John's concern from, so then are we just, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place.
Well, if we do nothing-
We get nothing.
We get zero, correct? I mean, we're just suing, and then somebody says, "Oh, yeah, no proof."
But then we're doing a call of the sixteen grand.
If we get information, we could target who the culpable party is.
And maybe both. It may be a combination.
Eighty-fifty, sixty-fourty, whatever.
So this thing is, is it worth sixteen thousand four hundred dollars plus our legal expenses to try to get?
Eight grand.
And you may not have legal expenses. I mean, it depends on what comes back. If it's very clear, then we have something to go to the folks with. I would think the first thing is in court. The first thing, here's a report, and in this report, it says the following. And if it's clear cut, I would put it out, especially LTL. I mean, we work for them now. They should come up with some cash if they wanna keep us in good stead. Maybe it's not gonna be a court case. I don't know, I can be Pollyanna.
Well, there is, there will be legal expenses, because we got this, because this report expense, and then we got Mark's expenses too.
For two or three years.
Right.
Well, we have those expenses. Mark, do you think this is worth it?
I don't know. That's what I'm talking about. I don't know.
Like, I still don't know why Pendott thinks we can win if we have the data that says this is the issue for all of this.
They didn't know that we would have data, though, right? They had no idea, but they know we'd have stuff. Well, they have- Yeah, so-
It might be worth re-contacting Val and seeing-
And have her look at this.
See what she thinks of this proposal, and whether it has merit to get some- Because we're not gonna fix the road. We're not gonna go back and repave the road. We're gonna gather some money to cover the costs of fixing it as it degrades. We didn't get what we wanted at all. We got a substandard job, and it's unfortunate.
Yeah, the players aren't gonna spend another three hundred thousand dollars and redo it.
But there's obviously things wrong, because the cores that we've taken, when you look at this cold-in-place process that he put in there, the upper part of it is fairly solid, but the bottom part is not, which says that he did not put enough asphalt or emulsion or whatever he was supposed to put into that mix when he reapplied it. So there's obviously defects. So-
So I'm all for the survey.
That's all mine. I mean, I still think it's a good idea to talk to Val.
The only thing I would do is, I wanna just consult with Val and see-
Test.
Because they just said, "Look, you're not gonna get any money," but maybe we might get a different answer from them.
So can we charge them?
I'd be inclined to defer just for one month till we consult with them. Because the price of this thing surprised me. I didn't expect it would cost us this much money at present.
And that's, this is the only, like you said, it's the only, StanTech is the only firm that we have now.
Can you search for why trying to find somebody who wasn't tied to one of the parties?
They're all kind of connected. Everybody's in, you know, this lab was worked for this guy, and they all subcontracted each other, so it's not so easy to find somebody that's fully independent, which we did, so.
John, Matt, you guys?
The one thing I wanna throw out, and I said it before, is I know it's a lot of money, not trying to spend the township's money, but that money that you're spending will also help us to determine what we need to do to fix this road in the future. It's not just-
Good point.
Where we wanna go, you know, with the other stuff. Come down the road, we're gonna have to fix this road. And that is gonna be the information that's gonna help us. And it's not gonna be a Band-Aid, it's gonna be a real fix. The things that have been thrown out, we're not gonna be able to build because of driveways and everything else that's in there. It's a lot of money, but down the road, it might be spread out to where that money's not that much. That's one thing I do wanna say, and make sure everybody understands, that it's just not a quick fix. We need to know a little bit more information to make that determination.
I agree, and that's an excellent point, that not only would it provide the basis for identifying the damage, but it also would allow us to determine how we actually fix the road as it degraded. So no one, like I said, you can't see underground, but with this particular study, you would have that knowledge of the condition of the road.
The information would be very helpful.
Helpful in the future maintenance, because we know it's degrading faster than we expected. The thing that really irritates me about this is we had a heavy, that was in two thousand- When did we build the salt shed?
Fifty.
Oh, fourteen, right. Okay, so you built the salt shed in two thousand and fourteen. And we typically put about a half a million dollars into capital road programming every year. So we really needed that building, so we took a quarter million dollars out of our capital road program and built that building. It came in under, under the price of, it came in at two thirty instead of two fifty. But it delayed our road program that year to the point we couldn't execute a road program. It took PC so long to prove the building, we couldn't get a road program going. So the following year, in two thousand fifteen, we had our normal half a million plus what was left over. So we had a big road program, and we were looking forward to making some real inroads into Brothers Riding, Peacedale Road. And then here we get a bad job. Through no fault, we have our own contract, our own contract inspector. We expect them to do their job. So I'm disappointed in that. We've had trouble with inspectors and pests. We had somebody, we first got on, I first got on the board, it was a guy that was intimidated by the contractor.
He was from McCormick, yeah, or-
Yeah, the guy was afraid of the contractor, so how can he? So we've had some trouble with inspectors before. I just wanna put that out there. That was extremely disappointing, because our expectation is we're really gonna move along with our road program here and got a bad job.
Well, so my view of it is, I believe that we should be able to choose the company to use, and I believe LTL should pay for it, and I believe the company should report to us. I believe at the very least, LTL owes that to us.
I mean, does it ever case to do that? Because we're gonna go, we already sent them a lot of it.
They, both LTL and the contractor unnoticed that we're looking at this thing, because the guarantee period has expired, but the fact that we got defective work says that, says that we can still recover, and that's what we're wanting. He's put a letter out there and just put it in there.
But the question on the table is, is Mark, if we should go to them? Because I wouldn't wanna drag it out, but while we're trying to get a hold of Val, can we, should, could we? Does it mess us up if we contact LTL and say, "Look, we're continuing to gather evidence on this road. We hold you," I don't know what the right words are, "but you're part of this. We're planning to do this. Will you pay for it?"
I don't think it hurts. I mean, if I were LTL, I might say, "Well, we'll pay for it, but we still don't think we did anything wrong."
That's okay.
And for them to pay for something that would allow us to ultimately attack it against them.
Yeah, that's where I would say that they would-
That's pretty tough for them to do.
Pay for a document that's-
But then they're saying maybe they did do something wrong. So I say, "Put it in their laps and say, 'Look, you are a trusted partner. We do a lot of work with you. We paid you specifically to make sure the quality of this road was at the level we needed. Now things are falling apart. You, it's time for you to put some skin in the game.'"
Here, would we be adverse? I mean, legally, we could do it, right?
Absolutely.
Would we be adverse to doing?
All I would say that I'd like to get another shot at Pendott and see what they think of the study. At any point, we turn it over, we agree to do the study, and we turn it over to Mark and say, "Here's the information."
Okay, that's good, so do it in a status.
Do it in a separate way. I don't think there's any advantage to just coming to him right now and say, "You gotta take it."
Because you're not sure you're gonna hear that.
Yeah, we don't, it's not a-
That makes sense. But does that mean we have to pay for it? No, no, no.
You're just waiting on your turn to tell.
There we go.
I just, Pendott was so adamant that we couldn't get anything out of it. I just would like to run that by them again and say, "Look, this is the kind of study we have. We're qualified, independent contractors, there's no cross-sp..."
Show them hope for that. That makes sense, because the worst would be to spend money, to have it prove that there's a problem, and then-
Exactly.
To your point, spend two years fighting in court and not be shown court.
And we may not catch three hundred thousand, but they might say-
Oh, yeah, whatever, get three hundred thousand.
They could say, "Okay, the average life of the road is hypothetically twelve years, and this road is gonna be eight years, so you're gonna get a hundred thousand bucks."
But what would be happening with that?
Yeah, they don't have a road.
Yeah.
Just not gonna last.
There's one thing I wanna go over, and why we don't use those contractors anymore. Because when you engage what I call the Pendott-qualified contractor, you put out a contract through Pendiv, I guess it is, the electronic system, you put out a request for a quotation on that system, any Pendott-qualified contractor can bid on that job. If they're successful, you have to use them.
You can, you can allow them.
You don't, you can't say, "I don't want this guy because he did this or that." You have to use them.
I thought you could. It seems like a bit training. You have to go through some hoops, but you don't have to use them.
You have to have a reason not to use them, right?
You're strongly obligated to use a, once they qualify themselves, a Pendott. So we don't, we haven't used them for a few years now, and the system we got's working a lot better for us. So just a point of information of why we're not going back, at least as long as I'm involved.
They don't deserve that.
I wanna go back to those guys. All right, so they say bring this, just, see if we set up some discussion with Val. We don't need to bring it down here. We can send it to them and just ask them for an opinion.
Okay, and then we'll bring it back to the next board.
Bring it back to the next board, maybe.
Is there, there's no statute of limitations since we sent a notice?
I mean, not for a month, I think.
No.
No, we're good.
Okay.
So you have to look for a motion.
I think it's fine.
Okay.
Table.
Yeah. I'd like to table the motion as regards to proposal from StanTech for approximately sixteen thousand four hundred to evaluate and test Peter Christopher Drive and Benjamin Run on Peacedale Road.
Second in the table.
I don't think we need a second.
Second table.
Let's all further information.
Down with more information, all right, good.
All right.
Last item, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're down to some open space discussion, so. Nancy, I mean, you've been working on stuff, and you've been working with it.
Okay, well, you could part of it.
I've got my hands in it some day. The rest of the board is not.
Okay. So there's one topic that I think we need to talk about as a board. I don't know if we have that information, but so John and I have met basically just to get to know the Natural Lands Group. So we met with Natural Lands. No act, there's no action or anything that's come from it. We're interested in seeing what they can do to help with any local land that's for sale that maybe we could find ways of preserving. So that's my interest, is to avoid more houses. Especially avoid dozens and dozens of houses. So we've been talking to Natural Lands. No act, like I said, no action's been taken, et cetera. We're also gonna talk to, I forget the name of that organization, Chester?
Oh, the Conservation-
Conservation.
Yeah, they preserve farming.
Yeah, well, there's another nonprofit group that is gonna also talk to us about the same lands for sale, just to see what's out there, what grants are out there, what could happen with that land that's right now for sale. Then through talking with Natural Lands, John and I found out that there's a local farm, hundred-acre farm, that's interested in going into farmland preservation, the program, that's run by the county. I think it's called the Open Space Preservation Program. And that's the group that has preserved the Boxer property. The Stolz's property has applied to that as well.
Schultz, both Schultz and Boxer.
And Schultz. And so there's another farm.
This farm, yeah.
Yeah, there's another farm that's interested. Now, informally, Natural Lands has asked me to talk to the board about whether we would pay for the survey, which is about thirty-four hundred dollars, three-four-zero-zero. That would be given back to us if that land was then preserved, put into ag easement. I understand, and John, you'll, probably everybody knows more about this at this point, but I guess you've done this before. Where you, the township has provided the money for the survey, and then Natural Lands and the Open Space Preservation Group and the county, the state, and everybody else kind of comes together and figures out how to preserve that farmland for that farm family. So I think at some point, we need to talk about, as a board, whether we want to loan or potentially loan that thirty-four hundred dollars for a survey for that local farm. Is any of this making sense? I feel like I haven't provided enough info, but-
How many, the way I see it, you're looking at three pieces of land. We're looking at Stolz's.
Right.
Stolz's, which is about a hundred acre ag preservation down at, on Appleton Road, Appleton and Strickland Hill Road.
Right.
Okay? And that one's in progress right now up there.
That's in progress, yeah.
Not what I'm talking about. How can it be in progress when we haven't done anything? They can't have to us.
Hold on a second, hold on a second. Let me finish this something.
Okay. The word progress got me concerned, okay.
Calm down. So that's, that's one property. And the second one that's being talked about is this Chisel Creek Golf Course.
Yeah, and I'm not expecting the township to- Okay, go ahead, John.
Okay, that's the one. And then the third property is a Dave Hawkins property over on Wicker River. Okay, and that's about a hundred and some acres.
Right.
Hundred-plus acres.
Right.
Okay, so those are the three properties that appear to be in play.
Yeah, and I could just say, so the Stolz's property won't come to us until the county finishes a survey, because they don't know how many acres it is. They don't know what they're gonna ask us for until the survey's done.
I got a phone call today.
Oh, good, okay.
All right, I'm just telling you what I'm looking for. I want some hard information on what they want the township to. I wanna be able to negotiate. I'm not gonna have somebody come in and just drop a big price on me, and then I gotta sign a paper. I wanna be able to negotiate this price. So I don't know where it is right now. I haven't seen a piece of paper that says anything about it, other than, other than that it's a hundred and eight acres, and not all of it's arable. Okay, tentatively, the board had a consensus agreement that we would consider this piece of property back at the end of two thousand and sixteen. And there was a number in mind, and I don't have it handy, but I'll dig it out. But if it's higher than that, that I don't wanna talk about. So that's what I'm looking for, for that, is the hard money cost to the township, and how will we pay that? And I'd like to be able to negotiate it. I'm not gonna just accept somebody's just dropping it.
Can I just comment? So that's where you are, John, right?
That's where I am right now. That's where I lead the board.
Well, that's where I'm at. So I, I, I mean, have we had these things? In play, I'm taking in play to mean, we as a board have not made any commitments. So is that, that's clear, right?
No commitments.
Right? Good, so that's good, because we haven't made any commitments.
There's no way we've made any commitments.
Okay, so that's good. But, and I know, and I also agree with what you said, that we did talk about the first property, and we also said that we would consider. But consider does not mean yes. Consider doesn't, no, I'm not saying, I'm just speaking for Donna. And things, life changes, because we've had a rough year already on snub removal, and there's only so much money. So we could say no, because we've never said that we would necessarily say yes. Okay, that's, that's all I, I wanna, I wanna be, and the other two, they're not even on my radar screen, so as far as we've never-
The rest of the board's never heard about these two.
Okay, okay, all right. I don't know how everybody else feels, it's just that this is a lot, and let's keep talking.
It would be nice to have a, you know, a portfolio of what is out there, because we might find that one of these three is not the best one, and there could be something coming up in a year or two that would be a better situation. Meanwhile, we blew our budget on a property that isn't really ideal. So I'm wondering if there's maybe a database or something we could consider.
Well, there's not, because you never know what's gonna come up. I know in the past, there was a Parks and Open Space Committee, and I think that was their job to, you know, in addition to managing the park, kind of getting, I don't know what happened, I don't know why it's not around anymore, but there is no committee, so therefore, it's our job to try to take on that committee work. The, since John mentioned Chisel Creek, my only interest in Chisel Creek is not to expect the township to spend anything on it, but to allow groups who might be interested- but to allow groups who might be interested to look at it, to make them aware of it, and to see if they could potentially make something happen. It's a no-risk proposition, just, you know, get it out there.
That's the way, based on the meeting we had with NLT there, the township wasn't committing anything.
Absolutely not, yeah, okay.
I didn't know how many acres it was.
Usually with Chisel Creek, it's, it was farmland, then it was built into a golf course, and there's a building on it. So that really doesn't, it's not a good piece of, it's not a nice piece of farmland, because it's chopped up now. So I'm not sure what you can do with it. In fact, it's not suitable, I believe, for the typical farmland preservation.
Right, so, and there's no talk about farmland preservation. You can put eighty houses on, is what you can do. And so, it would, I'm not looking, not talking to anyone about farmland preservation. It's more about what could these, do these groups know, maybe developers who are more interested in, you know, equestrian properties, where we don't have eighty houses? Are there ways that they might wanna preserve parts of it? You know, they be interested in creating a, a trail around the exterior, and then the interior maybe gets? I'm just looking to see how we can minimize impact on the township.
If, if somebody were to chart a development in that way, into some larger parcels for inclined use, certainly the township would look at that very favorably. But to get involved in it, that would mean that we would have to own it.
Right, no, 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 no interest.
Just wanna make sure that, that's where I am.
The township cannot and.
Somebody's gotta do a land development plan there, and that wouldn't be us.
But we'd like to connect, you know, if they can help us connect a developer to that land, great, you know, we can work with them, and so that they are more successful in the outcome, you know, they can feel like they're not going to have to run the gauntlet as much, obviously following all the laws and regulations. Alright, so Chisel Creek is just an interesting.
Yeah, I understood, I thought it was good to hear that.
Yeah, now, like I said, the third thing just came about because we met with Natural Lands, and apparently Mr. Hawkins has met with Natural Lands, or Mrs., I don't know who, who has met. But the, the family is interested in potentially preserving that farmland, and Natural Lands is very interested in helping them, and that is farmland preservation. Bill Gladden, who runs the county farmland preservation, I told him about it, so he's aware. But Natural Lands is stuck, they don't wanna, you know, the Hawkins family doesn't wanna pay for a survey. Someone has to do a survey, so a survey has to be paid for. They would like to come to the township to see if the township would pay for the survey. That's something that the township would actually agree on collectively, and Joan has mentioned to me that the township has done this in the past before, so Joan, maybe you can share a little bit about what happened in the past.
Well, I mean, we have done that for some of the other open space projects, and then it's, it becomes part of the total package that the township has contributed. For, for example, the Stolzmas, they're looking for us to do forty-five percent if we can. So that increases the value of the easement, you know, if we had paid for their survey. So it increases what we have already can contribute.
We don't, we don't even know if we're gonna.
Right.
This is an example, I'm just giving you.
To me, it almost doesn't logically make sense, I don't know how much a survey like this is gonna cost, but to me, that doesn't logically make sense, that we pay for a survey, and then if we don't like the terms, then it's some cost, money just lost on.
Well, there have been cases where we paid for the survey, and then nothing happened, so that we're out.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
That's what we, we favor.
Thirty-six hundred dollars is a pretty minor commitment to the potential of preserving farmland, and it doesn't require you to commit to anything else, so it's not.
We're not committed to anything else.
It's not even on our radar still, let alone putting money into it, so, I mean, this thing is years off. I know they're not, I don't believe that they're in a big hurry, I don't know what that situation is, other than that it's something that they want to, but to put money into a real estate deal, it's way out there.
It's not, it's not a deal, it's just a survey.
A real estate deal isn't a deal until it's done.
Right, but we're not committing to anything, the thirty-six hundred dollars survey.
I'm not even willing to commit to that.
I'm not willing to commit to that.
I'm not either.
I'm not either.
Attempted that.
I'll tell you again, I mean, I'll just, I'll try not to get angry, but we're gonna spend money on the pickleball, which is great, I voted for it, I'm all for it. We are up a creek with the road work, you know, to me, this is important for everyone in the community. I'm not asking for the money today, but I'm asking people to think long-term, big picture, and there's a risk of being penny wise and being a foolish.
Like, three million dollars in the hole, what is our, what is our, what are the thingy dollars?
Yes.
For open space.
We spent quite a bit of money on open space.
And it's our work.
And that was before this board, and have you ever?
And we are so lucky that we did that.
Can I ask you a question? Have you ever read in any of the documents that pertain to your role as supervisor or board as a, as a group of township officials, that says it is our responsibility, or in our realm of things to do, to preserve open space?
It's not in our realm to do a lot of things we talk about.
I'm sorry?
It's, it's in our realm to create and preserve an environment for our community. That's our job, whether it's emergency services or parks, you don't have to have a park.
No.
Yeah, there's just services.
That, that, you can't pay a general standard like that.
It's just, alright, let's just not go there.
I wouldn't have, first of all, I don't like that you're spending.
So you're saying no, you're saying no.
It's not a discussion we need to have with all these poor people here, it's a.
The family should split, wouldn't it, maybe? Why couldn't you split?
I won't, I'm with you.
No, okay.
I would like to.
That's why I'm on board. I stayed in your position two years ago and said.
I mean, if you were to say, okay, this is the Hawkins farm, this is the Stolzmas farm, these are the dollars, and, and this is, how much, where's where's the contribution as a township? We can talk about it, and if that means at that point we pay for the survey, then we can talk about it then, but it just seems way early to me to be putting in something when we have no idea what the terms might even look like.
Right.
I have no idea.
Right, we haven't done it. So Joan, you know where the Stolzmas farm, what we're going to be asked to.
The, the survey is complete, but they don't have all the final numbers, and, but, I mean, they're, they're guessing the appraisal was in the five thousand dollar range per acre.
Okay, and then we paid forty-five percent of that.
And then we would be, that's what ideally they would like from us.
So let's say twenty-two hundred.
It's two thirty.
And let's say it's a hundred acres, which is probably a lot, and it's over ten years, so you end up paying, what, thirty-some thousand a year?
Five, five years.
Five years, okay, so it's like forty-five thousand a year.
Forty-eight.
Okay, alright, so now we kind of have a sense of Stolzmas.
Right, and I don't, I mean, we'll have to work on where we get that from, and that's not gonna be an easy. I'm not saying we won't, won't find it, right, but that's not, it's gonna be counted. Now, there, there are ways that the county can work with us on that, if, if we can do that. So I, so I think, I just had that in my head, okay, that, we, we talked to the gentleman before, we talked to somebody, we told them we were considering, made no commitment, but that one's real, like, that, that feels real to me.
Right, right.
And, and, and we need to get our arms around that as more information comes in.
Yeah, I agree.
Really consider it, right? Hawkins and spending a couple thousand dollars on something that's not even, it just seems so far out. I just, I can't get my head around, I gotta get my head around Stofus and figure out how we can do, if, if, if we can do that.
Let's kind of put this in perspective here, we have, looking at our, our tax structure right now, we're at two point four nine five mils, two and a half mils.
Is that for open space?
No, there's a half a mil dedicated to open space.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
Which is twenty percent of our, our, our current real estate income is dedicated to open space. And all that money, which is somewhere around a hundred and sixty thousand a year, is used to cover the debt service for the previous administration's program.
And.
Great, that helped us avoid a thousand dollars.
Let me finish something.
Yeah.
Okay, in, in addition, it comes up twenty thousand dollars a year short. So, in addition to the dedicated money, the taxpayer approved money, we're still putting another twenty thousand a year into it to cover the loan service. So we're really at the end of our tax, our approved spending. We have no more, from a, from a voter approval standpoint, we can't really spend any more money. I don't think it's that hard of a number, and that's why I looked at the Boxer property, and I thought we might do that one, as it turned out, somebody benevolently did it on their own, and we didn't have to, and we looked at, we're looking at Stofus. But to go beyond that, I think you need some voter approval. I, I don't think you can go any further than even that Stofus one, without getting some, some voter approval.
So Joan, when you say voter approval, you mean agreement from the voters to raise taxes to cover it?
To raise taxes and cover it, yeah.
But why, why, it's just the money.
Where's the money?
Do you think the vote, have the voters agreed that we spend four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars a year on roads? Was that voted on?
Let's, let's, let's put it in perspective. The road maintenance is a core function, the road maintenance, emergency service, traffic safety, land development planning, they're the four core functions.
Yes.
Open space is an extra item. It's not a core function of the township, never has been.
What do we get in income from the tower, the Southland Tower in the park? And what do we spend, where do we comply that way?
Considered as.
Considered as general funding, then you should go back to open space.
Why is that? How do you, how do you make that?
The Southland Tower's in, Tower's in the park, that's part of the park. It wouldn't be there if there wasn't a park there, it would be on someone's backyard.
I'm not sure I can make that connection.
Yeah, well, that's a separate parcel, that's not actually part of the park. It's over next to the park, they join each other, it's a separate parcel plan.
But we, we've reached the limit of what we can do.
We're over the limit.
Well, we are over, we are over the limit.
Way over.
Well, we're safe, we're capable of it.
There's no decision needs to be made today.
The, the other issue is, is you just can't buy all, you can't afford to buy all.
Farm preservation isn't about buying it, it's about allowing the farmer to stay on their land.
Well, when I, maybe I should, maybe I should.
You're buying the rights.
You're buying the rights.
You're not buying the land, you're buying the rights, and that's how they, that's how.
And we, we profess to be pro-farm, and that's how you help farmers.
That's right.
Yes.
But you still.
I'm sorry, this is a working farm, correct?
Yes.
So, so to perhaps generate some type of income to put into this purchase or funding of it, what about doing like farming programs, or like something where like people could come to this farm, to learn, to experience, and generate income?
It's always farming, I forget.
Hard, hard money from taxes.
They own the land because they count on the preservation funds to help.
At least it's people right down the street.
Let me explain what the, the farmland preservation does, and why it's, it's, it's desirable. Is that when you preserve a piece of farmland, the township does not own it. In fact, we have no rights to use it. We essentially buy the rights from that particular individual.
So they can't sell it and develop it.
They can't develop, but they still, but they still own the land, fully own it, and they're required.
But there's some benefit for that.
They're required to provide the maintenance on that land, the assurance, the liability. The township has no input, and that's the ideal situation, because then we have, without any, any other easements or any other issues, that's the preferred way to do it, and that's really the thing that I would consider. But any of these other deals, a land conservation thing, I'm not interested in those. Only the farmland preservation.
I just wanna be clear, I'm not against it. I mean, I think this is a good way, I just, I just.
You have so many, of some type of little way to funnel.
Yeah.
To generate some, some, yes, to have any cash flow into it, to kind of help the township with, you know.
I don't, I don't.
One thing could happen, is there may be some benevolent people in the township that could write some checks, and we would take those.
Not really.
I asked enough to.
Or just direct them directly to the people, say, is a man able to spend money and give it to somebody, and say, this is, so that you don't sell it to a developer or a factory?
I think there's already been some benevolence.
I think the only thing that's on, on the near, the only thing that's on the near term is Stofus, and I'm not committed to do it yet, I still don't see the terms. So I'm, I'm not interested in putting any money out in advance of.
I'll let the agenda.
So I don't really press the board, it is, but that's where I am.
I do, I'm gonna, I, I do appreciate you dealing with this stuff, gathering information, and, and I, and the other thing that I ask, and I think you'll do it anyways, because I see you are, is come back to us, I mean, go back to, or maybe ever so many.
Oh, you're on.
Make some copies of that.
No, no, I mean, this is a great update, to let us know.
Make some copies of that to the board.
They took the leadership, and it's gonna be here, what's going on.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not against it either, like, I was in favor of Boxer, when it came up, I thought it was, had all the attributes, it made sense. Well, I just need more information, you know. We didn't get involved in townships or anything, how, how did that happen? We got, and Stolz, Schultz, a twenty-five acre, survey one year.
Oh, Schultz, since they don't even allow the. Thank you for coming, folks. It's wonderful, you did.
And you stayed past your.
Yes, you did.
We were tired of it.
A lot of people come, and when their issue is finished.
Hopefully I'll see you at the pickleball court, you can teach us how to play.
Okay, okay, hang on a minute. This is a, this is how to put things in perspective, this is a kind of a, a tax comparison table. Comparing us to the surrounding townships, which would be Elk, Franklin, London, Ricky, London, Bro, New London, and Penn. And you can see I've listed the, the real estate tax mils for each of those townships. Using a, a median assessed value for a home of about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, I calculated what the real estate tax would be. I've also indicated what EIT tax is for each township. And I did go in here and look at the, the median income for each of these townships, and calculated what their EIT tax would be, and totaled those taxes, so that we have a total tax per township based on that criteria. So you can see the Franklin Township is way up there.
Pretty high.
We're, our taxes are pretty high.
Because our EIT is low, that's part of it.
Yeah, but the combination that this.
It's a valuable thing. The, our mileage is pretty high. At one time, just a point of reference, when I first came on board with Penny Shank, it was three point oh eight mils, and we reduced it to two and a half mils. So we made a reduction, and we're still able to manage the township business. But I just thought it was interesting to see how we fitted into the surrounding townships. And at one time, we wanted to add, John's mentioned the point a number of times, is with regards to the EIT, a lot of our residents do not work in our township or state, they live, they work in Delaware. So we don't get that money from a EIT for somebody that works in Delaware.
That's right.
Sucks.
We talked about that last, I made an issue with that, I talked about that last night at the school board meeting, because we got, township stuck some criticism in that meeting.
Why we don't have businesses?
Because we don't have enough businesses in our townships to generate a business tax base. And the school board member that did that really was just not knowledgeable. The reason we don't have any business is because of the tax structure. We have a six percent sales tax intensive, and Delaware has zero. So isn't anybody gonna build, open up a retail business in any of the lower townships, all the way up to Penn and London Road Township? If somebody can go to Delaware, take a ten mile ride, and save six percent. So that's why there are no businesses there. And that was an unfair shot that we took last night, I did, in the public comment section, correct that. But to Stephen's point, is that we have a significant number of residents that live in our township, that work in Delaware, and they do not pay the EIT, yet they use township services and roads and all the things. And the reason they don't is because Delaware's got this outrageous income tax, and we have a half a percent, so they are essentially exempt.
We don't look at that one, we look at, we're paying the Delaware taxes, and it's crazy, but.
I, I know, but if you look at the township tax, the township's standpoint, you have somebody living up here using services, you have somebody living up here using services and not paying. But that's just the nature of that.
Well, and just, one time I was doing a comparison, and New London takes in, in just EIT tax, what we take in at EIT and, and real estate. I mean, their, their EIT base is so much greater than ours.
It's an interesting comparison, I'll expand on it a little bit. A couple of years ago, I did a benchmark study, just kind of looking at everybody's budget and looking at categories. New London is pretty similar to Franklin in terms of demographics and a lot of the attributes. And they got the same half a percent EIT rate as we do. And they take in about a million dollars a year in EIT, we take in about 69,000. Why?
That's a big difference.
Because we're a different way. We're closer to Delaware.
It's right next to us.
I mean, they're, they're from Delaware. We have probably, I believe because we're closer to the state of Delaware, we have more residents that work in Delaware, live here. London, Britain, don't even have an EIT. The reason they don't is they can't get anything out of it. They've already looked at that many, many times, and it's a tax that they can't collect. So if you look at their military-
Is there all working in Delaware?
Yeah, look at the military that London Britain's got.
Ah, there's the fourth, wow.
Yeah, so.
What, six, five, five?
And they can't even, and they can't afford to fix their roads, even the back. So it's just, I thought it was an interesting comparison to bring into the mix that we are pretty high in our taxes. I mean, ultimately, the way I looked at this one, when I first got in here, I thought the military rate was too high, three mils. So at one point, we took it down 10% a year for two years to this, two and a half. We've done well with that rate. My expectation long-term is that once we get the roads in a condition that we can lower the amount of maintenance, that we probably give some money back.
Something like that.
But that's maybe four or five years down the road. Anyway, that was-
But I think we should be proud we're not raising taxes, and we have the intention of raising taxes.
Well, we do have some, some expenses this year. We've got, not this year, but next year and part of this year. Is the Hessfeld Road Bridge needs to be repaid. And that thing is going to be somewhere in 350,000 to do that. That's not, not our expense for the township. So we're going to do the preliminary engineering, get permits this year for about 50,000, do that next year. We haven't figured out exactly how to finance it, so that's a fairly strong strain on our budget. We may have to borrow some short-term money to do that.
We're going to help, would that mean, we have some-
Well, we also found out recently, we get some help from the conservation group that does pay part of 50%. So we don't have a whole budget laid out yet, because that's what John's working on right now.
Yeah, well, yeah, the engineer's working on it, yeah.
But we've got a strong commitment to our road program, and we've got a strong commitment to this bridge. So how we scale Stolzman's, I don't know yet, but I just don't see us doing a whole lot more for a while. Purpose of the discussion is to just have some of this, don't go out here. Any other comments?
You don't need a motion, right?
No, it's just a, I put it at the end of the meeting because I didn't, didn't do it.
Please, there's some people's stage listening to it.
Did you find an interesting test?
Oh.
He's a dummy too, I'm telling you.
The first two hours, okay.
Now it's getting late, right?
It's your, no, no, you say, it's your money for us. It's your money and it's our money. We're here, so. We'll spend it very frugally here.
Almost as much as John.
Okay, we don't have any more.
John.
But we do have another item, excuse me.
Yeah, we need to add this to the agenda tomorrow, it just came up.
All right, let me find my paper here. Everybody's got one here.
Yes, conservation.
Is that what, we're going to write the conservation?
Yeah, for the Ford Farm. All right, apparently, we need to act on this particular conservation easement this evening, because if we do not act on it, Scott Wilkinson will not be able to use this farm and plant. She needs to do short-term. This is something that's come up from, is it NLT?
Yes.
I really don't understand how they have that level of control, but they do. Mark, you review this thing, and-
Yes.
We're okay to approve it?
All of the parties, NLT, the county, and the township, will need to approve it. This is an amendment to the easement based on the deed in lieu of, the pipeline company condemning the area that they're taking for that pipeline across the Ford Farm property.
So you said condemned?
Well, they're not going to condemn, but they're granting this easement. The owner of the property is, and, and because that's the case, under the original NLT easement, since money was given for the original conservation easement, a certain amount of money that they're getting for that pipeline easement needs to be given back to the entities that gave the money originally, which was the township and the county. So in order for this to take place, the original conservation easement needs to be amended, and this is the first amendment to that conservation easement to note that this, there's now an easement across the property for a pipeline. All the parties need to approve it and sign off. So this would be the exact same document that NLT and the county would need to approve. I don't know if the county or NLT has approved this yet, but we are one of the parties that needs to do it.
Well, and this came from NLT, you know, so.
Right, right.
So there's just a little less land in the east, there's less land, there's more land in the east, so there's less land in the, in the thing that we-
Doesn't change the, the actual amount of land that's in the easement, it just notes that now there is a pipeline easement that goes through the middle of one of the farm fields.
So we get $7,415 to the township for the right-of-way easement?
Right. And that's money that the pipeline company is giving to Two Boys, the owner of the property, Wilkinson. And then they have an obligation to split that money and give it back to the individuals that gave money to the original easement.
Okay, okay.
All right, so let me, let me kind of form a motion here. It may take me a few minutes to get this, let me turn it here. I make a motion to approve the First Amendment of Conservation Easement, by and between Natural Lands Trust Incorporated and Two Boys LP, a Pennsylvania Limited Partnership. I think that's it.
Second?
Let me, let me read it again, see if they gave up some words. I'm using some of the word in, right in the beginning of here. Mark, I'm not sure how much we need to include here. There's something about a date, and I don't think we need to include that in there.
There's no motion there, please. He's reading my phone.
Why don't you look at the first paragraph there, and I'll, I'll read the motion and see whether it sounds like a right motion. So I make a motion that, to approve the First Amendment of Conservation Easement, by and between Natural Lands Trust Incorporated, a Pennsylvania nonprofit holder, and Two Boys LP, a Pennsylvania Limited Partnership, the undersigned owner, period.
That's good enough, yes.
You think so?
That is approving this document.
That's essentially what it-
That's, that's exactly what that motion is doing.
See, you think that motion's all right?
That's, that's correct.
Second?
And, and just so that we're clear, you're not approving a pipeline or a pipeline easement. The only thing you are approving is the-
Conservation easement.
To the conservation easement.
So, so the funding, part of that funding then comes back to the township?
Correct.
It's kind of ironic, isn't it? Is that because the township helped preserve that land? Used township dollars before?
Right.
That's about the equivalent of survey of the Hockings Farm.
Right, so because there's a pipeline that goes through the property, the conservation value has been diminished, and we get some of that back.
Minished by the pipeline, yeah.
Minished by the fact that a pipeline goes through agricultural view.
Interesting.
And so everyone's clear, we're not approving the pipeline.
Right.
The pipeline is going in that location, whether or not we approve this document or not.
Okay, so who signed, who signed?
John.
John signed it.
Stefan, Stefan's second in the motion, all right? Any other discussion?
All in the papers, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposing aye. Motion parrot.
Aye, sir.
We're down to the last item on the agenda, public comment.
You guys have anything left?
I have to say, thank you. Thank you so much. Danny, this is interesting. And, and just, thank you, Jim, my sign is good. They're a little bit like, you're going to 24.
You're a property.
Yeah, it's your property. They're not historic signs, I'm just telling you, I'm not going to let's, you know.
So I actually have a, something I just like to bring up that I don't know how much people are aware of or not. And I'm aware of something like this, I get emails from the historic heritage side of it. But the Chester County Planning Commission is doing the Landscape III development process right now, and there's going to be a meeting on April 10th at New Garden Township. At 5:30, that's when the open house display starts, and the formal presentation starts at 6. I intend to go because I'm interested, I want them to take account first off of, you know, the historic heritage that we have here. I'm also interested in making sure that they recognize that the township remains a relatively rural and residential part of the county, not something, the township that's different than the township on Route 1. And so that this is taken into account when they look at this and they plan for us, and it, on, on the county level. And so I don't think what else is needed going, but I think it's a worthwhile thing to take a little time out, stop in, and see to it that the nature of this township gets a hearing when the meeting is down at this part of the county.
Who's the presenter, you know? Brian O'Leary is the guy.
Brian O'Leary, I believe, is the, is the one who originated the email. And it's basically, but you can also, I can pass this along.
Can you give the share, can I share something else?
You forward it to the board. Yeah, I can, I'll just, I'll just, yeah, come on, I can do that. I forward the email, forward it to the township staff.
We got a fire, didn't we?
Yeah, I got, I got an email, I've known about this for a while, but then, you know, Karen Marshall was always sending this stuff out, send out yet another alert. And so I was aware of it, and because we're meeting tonight, and we're, you know, about two weeks in advance.
The tax, right?
So April 10th, New Garden Township. The formal presentation begins at 6:30, 6:00 PM. They don't require registration, but they would like people to sort of check in with them so that they have an idea of how many people might be there. You'll see all that when I send it, April 10th.
And then open to the public?
Yes, it's open to the public, but they are specifically encouraging people who are involved with the township, you know, in an official capacity to show up and make their presentation.
This is 6 o'clock, or 6 PM, New Garden.
Yeah, the presentation, the open house starts at 5:30, the presentation starts at 6 PM.
I'm just looking, I don't have a conflict on the calendar yet, Tuesday's usually a conflict.
There it is, I want to bring that up.
Now, Brian's a very approachable guy, I don't know if he ever talked to him, but he comes to our KDO meetings all the time, so he's somebody that-
I think, and he's very approachable, you know, very easy to work with, so. And, you know, Karen Marshall is now officially under the planning commission, I feel that they moved her department, so she's also got her stuff.
Okay. Any other public comment? Meeting is adjourned at 9:48.